The regular meeting of the Board of Education at the San Francisco Unified School District for May 13th, 2025 is now called to order at 4:03 PM. Roll call, please, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander, here. Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Gupta. Vice President Healy.
Here.
Commissioner Ray.
Here.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward. President Kim.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item A, general information. Accessibility information, translation and interpretation services and virtual meeting information can be found online under item A1, 2, or A2, 3, and 4. SFUSD will provide childcare for regular board meetings and monitoring meetings on the first floor of the enrollment center at 555 Franklin from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM, or the close of the meeting, whichever comes first. Childcare is for families who will be attending the regular or monitoring board meetings. Space is limited and will be provided on a first-come, first-served basis for ages 3 to 10. If you have questions, please contact the Board Office at 415-241-6427, or BoardOffice@sfusd.edu. At this time, before the Board goes into closed session, I call for any speakers to the closed session items listed in the agenda. There will be a total of five minutes for speakers. Are there any speakers for public comment?
Seeing none, President Kim nor online.
Great.
Closed captioning in American Sign Language. Translation services. SFUSD will provide closed captioning in American Sign Language ASL interpreter services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here. HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot streamtext dot net slash player question mark event equals SFUSD dash board. Attendees who wish to provide public comment to the Board and would like an ASL interpreter can use the Q and A box in the Zoom app or type their names or handle and list the items on the agenda they would like to comment on. The attendee will need to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter and the Board. When it is the attendee's opportunity to provide comment, the Zoom host will promote the attendee to panelists and enable the attendee's video. Any member of the public may email their comments with the agenda item identified in the comment to BoardOffice@sfusd.edu by 2:00 PM, the day of the meeting. If they do not wish to make the comment during the board meeting, the comments will be read Language translation.
Thank you. SFUSD is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please dial the following phone number. After dialing, please enter this number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. Buenas tardes. El 17a Escuela Unificada de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si necesita interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres uno nueve, tres ocho dos, nueve seis siete seis. Por favor, introduzca la clave seis seis cinco, nueve nueve seis, nueve siete seis, seguido de la tecla, seguido de la tecla numeral o tecla left. Gracias. Heather's interpreter, please. Thank you.
Good evening. I am your Chinese translator, San Francisco Unified School District. During the teaching committee, we provide Spanish translation services. If you need to hear Chinese, just translate immediately. Call 1484-854-3328. Then enter the password 721609895. Thank you.
Thank you for the translation.
Thank you. I just want to start by recognizing and thanking members of the public for being here today. We appreciate your participation in tonight's meeting. I just encourage you to review some of the rules of conduct for public meetings. They just have some descriptions around limitations for size. The big thing is we just want everyone to have access to the meeting itself. So if you can just watch your signs and make sure they're not covering any views from people behind you, we would really appreciate that. And with that, I will get started. I now reconvene the regular meeting at 6:42 PM, and will begin with the readout of closed session. Item C, in three matters of anticipated litigation, the Board by a vote of seven ayes gives direction to the General Counsel. In the matter of student AMR versus SFUSD OAH case number 2025-020839, the Board by a vote of seven ayes gives direction to the General Counsel. In the matter of student AHG versus SFUSD OAH case number 2025-040334, the Board by a vote of seven ayes gives direction to the General Counsel. In the matter of LB versus SFUSD SS Superior Court case number CGC 22603293, the Board by a vote of seven ayes gives direction to the General Counsel. And on a vote of seven ayes, the Board took action to issue final notices of release or reassignment to 16 certificated administrators. Item D, land acknowledgement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rama Tishaloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land in accordance with their traditions, the Rama Tishaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretaker of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rama Tish community, and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. Item 2, approval of board minutes of the regular meeting April 8th, 2025, Special Select Committee April 17th, 2025, and Regular Meeting Monitoring Workshop April 22nd, 2025. May I have a motion and a second on the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any changes to the minutes named before? Seeing none, we'll roll call, but please, Mr. Steele.
Student Delegate Montgomery.
Yes.
Student Delegate Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta.
Yes.
Vice President Healy.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward.
Yes.
President Kim.
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Responses to Commissioner questions on the agenda items can be found under item D3. The San Francisco Unified Board of Education follows a student outcomes-focused governance model. Based on community input, the Board has adopted our vision, values, goals, and guardrails in order to increase the portion of board meeting minutes, or board meeting time, rather, we spend on student outcomes. Every other regular meeting is a monitoring workshop. This model also calls on the Board to empower the superintendent to take full ownership of the strategies used to reach these goals within the guardrails set by the Board. As we implement this new governance framework, the Board will continue to adopt new systems, routines, and policies that improve student outcomes. We encourage the public to follow this work on our website at sfusd.edu/governance, as we commit to finding new and improved ways to more meaningfully engage with staff, students, and their families. With that, I'll pass it to the superintendent for her report.
Thank you, President Kim. Great, welcome, everyone. I know that today, today's meeting, we have a lot of members in our audience, and I'm sure lots of people listening and watching, and of course, we want to hear your voices, and we want to make sure that we engage with you. But I want to share, before we get into other discussion items for today, a number of things that is going on around the district. First and foremost, I want to make sure that everyone understands that April, for the past 30 years, we have joyfully celebrated SFUSD Pride Month in April. I know that pride is in June, but because students are not in school during June, we celebrate it in April. This year, we hosted events for our students to celebrate SFUSD Pride Month, including special read-alongs of Door by Door by Sarah McBride, became, How Sarah McBride Became America's First Openly Transgender Senator by Meg Pinkus, which, yes, that deserves a big clause. Which I had the honor of introducing. The author read her book about Sarah McBride, now the first openly transgender U.S. Congresswoman, to over 1,500 students over Zoom. So thank you to everyone who celebrated with us in our schools, out in the community, throughout the entire district, throughout the entire city. Pride Month for SFUSD in April. Next slide, please. In May, we proudly celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a time to honor the rich histories and contributions of our AAPI communities. During this month, SFUSD educators have aligned lesson plans, and many schools will be holding assemblies and celebrations throughout the entire month. To learn more about the AAPI heritage, please go on our website, sfusd.edu/AAPI. We also join communities across the country in celebrating, oh, I'm sorry, one back, across the country in celebrating, celebrating our Jewish-American Heritage Month as well, an opportunity to honor the vibrant cultures, traditions, and contributions of our Jewish-Americans and students and families throughout the district. Next slide, please. In the past two weeks, we celebrated our teachers. We celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week, as well as Principal Appreciation Day. Instagrams were full of SFUSD teachers and principals being appreciated in all moments and all during their school days, and I kept singing pictures of our fantastic teachers and administrators throughout all of our social media platforms. We saw flowers and chalk drawings and breakfasts and lunches and stickers and beautifully handwritten notes with drawings from children who truly, truly love their teachers and also truly love their principals and administrators. Also, Generation Thrive honored two of our teachers on May 8th with surprise teacher appreciation awards given by a warrior legend. Congrats to Whitney Rowe at Buena Vista Horace Mann. And Sammy Tran at Martin Luther Kane Jr. Middle School. Okay, so moving on, I also want to celebrate our school nurses on School Nurse Day, yay, which was on May 7. Our school nurses play a critical role in ensuring the health, safety, and academic success of all of our students. They not only provide essential medical care, but also serve as advocates, helping to meet physical, mental, and emotional health of our students. So we greatly appreciate you and honor you for supporting us to meet our second gold, second guardrail of supporting the whole child. And then I had the opportunity to celebrate this year's superintendent's 21st Century Scholarship Award winners last week. We had six amazing, amazing students who were, who exemplified all of the characteristics of the graduate profile. We were able to celebrate them at the Asian Art Museum, which was amazing, and I can go on and on about each one of them, but I'm going to read here. So the student that won the Ready to Learn and Work with Others profile is Shaleez Becerra from Balboa High School. Ready to Think, Learn, and Grow, Delilah Blazer from Mission High School. Ready for Career and Life, RJ Carlos from June Jordan High School. Ready to Be Your Best, Andres Melo Moreno, oh, sorry, Moreno from SF International. And Ready to Tackle a Changing World, Key Pham from Galileo High School. And Ready to Create, Ray, er, Ray Cutes, Cuteser Jew from Independence High School. Oh, thank you, sorry. So we were so proud to be able to offer each one of these students $3,000 in scholarships towards their, their next stage in life, and that's just really, really fantastic. We were also heard a incredible original poem that was read by Unique Cooper from Burton High School as well. So in April, on April 24th, I had the pleasure of attending this amazing art show by Access SFUSD, The Ark. It was held at the American Conservatory Theater. The event was, was featured original songs, dance routines, all different types of art. I was joined by, of course, our amazing Commissioner Fisher, where we both, I will not say, but we both very much enjoyed dancing and singing. There were some tears, but it was amazing. It is truly an honor to be able to support these, our, these students, because they, they are just, just amazing and fantastic. I truly, truly enjoyed the show, and I actually bought that art, and anyone who goes into my office will now see it hanging in my office there. Yeah, so it's done by Anthony, that young man right there. He's fantastic. Okay, so moving on, join us for our annual Summer Literacy Fair and celebrate the joy of reading. All families are welcome, especially those with children in pre-K through fifth grade. This educational event will offer a variety of engaging literacy activities and games designed to support our students and your child's reading skills. It is free, so please come and join us. You can find more about it on a link that we'll put on our website. And then, speaking of ways to support your child during the summer, please join us for a Summer Institute for Families to explore resources and tools to support your students' success over the summer break. And yes, summer break is coming, it's just a couple, couple of weeks away. The institute will have engaging workshops on literacy, digital learning, health and wellness, and college access and preparation. This event is free and open to all families. So please, once again, go onto our website to register, and you may have a chance to, oh, you will receive, you'll receive a summer backpack filled with school supplies, workbooks, literacy games, and more. So please go on our website to learn more. And then, throughout June and July, SFUSD Student Nutrition Services will be offering breakfast and lunch at no cost to all young people 18 years of age and younger. At 45 of our schools during summer programs, young people do not need to be enrolled in the summer program to receive access to the meals, so please go on our website to learn where those meal sites are. Please come and, and of course, help yourself to the meals, because it is extremely important. And then just finally, I am pleased to announce that we will again be providing outdoor graduation for all of our high school students. So we will be celebrating graduation for all from June 2nd through June 4th at Kesar Stadium, Jerry Garcia Amphitheater, and the Golden Gate Band Shell. You will definitely find more announcements about it at your high school. I hope to see you all there. I imagine it's going to be a very festive and fun day, or several days, where we honor and celebrate all of our hardworking seniors. Thank you so much to these young people. I know it's really hard to push to, to the end. And then just a reminder for everyone, Monday, May 26th is Memorial Day, and so we will be closed that day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sue. Moving to item 6, Student Delegate Report, I call on Delegate Montgomery and Delegate Lamb to give an update on the Student Advisory Council.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Sue, for your amazing report. Good evening, Board, community, and students. It's so nice seeing everyone here today, and I would love to hear from all of you guys during public comment. So, to keep it kind of short, so we could hear from more of you guys, we, Langston and I, on top of our president of the SAC, all have really good news when it comes to selecting our next cohort of Student Advisory Council leaders. And we are currently in the selection of choosing leaders, and we're really excited to notify them by tomorrow. And so far, it's looking pretty diverse when it comes to schools, and we hope to get more voices in our cohort next year. And the process of choosing these leaders is a bit different compared to other years, as the Student Advisory Council applications usually go throughout the summer, but this year, we decided to, like, release it a little earlier, so we could implement summer tasks, so the next cohort would be prepared for the next school year. And I'm working on summer tasks, and I hope to get these students involved when it comes to the community as a whole. So I'm talking to all the early education educators, all the middle school teachers, all the high school teachers, every educator in this room. If you are in need of help when it comes to setting up your classrooms in the beginning of the school year, please, 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 reach out to me as soon as possible. You should get, like, a notepad out, because my email is yzlam@s.sfusd.edu. And if you could send me an email before the end of the school year, that'd be amazing, because we would love to have some students getting involved in the community, and notably helping out the educators who constantly help us out.
We are also hoping, with getting everything started a little bit moving earlier this year, to hit the ground running with in terms of our committees for next year. We really want to restructure SAC so it functions more in line with how the Board functions now this year, since there's been some changes over the SFUSD the last couple of years, and things haven't really been working for SAC. So the idea of doing all this early, and getting the summer tasks in, is so we can have a really strong group going into next year, and how we set up and influence change in the district. We also, the last time we had a report was even before the Youth Summit, which was at this point, like, a month ago. So just like a quick report on the Youth Summit from us, we were really happy with the event, ran really smooth, and we had a really good turnout. We were really surprised with how well it went, and, but that is not to discredit any of the work that SFUSD officials, as well as our students at SAC, put in to get this event done and make it as successful as it was. So we are super excited and happy to have the next Youth Summit for next year, but again, really happy with how this last one turned out. And as a product of that, we have a bunch of hoodies for all the commissioners here to pass out that we designed.
Yes, and as Langston grabs that box, a little bit about these hoodies, they're inspired by the Stussy company. It's like a skater company that a lot of high schoolers tend to rep, and we had it designed by one of the freshmen in the SAC. She goes to SOTA, which is my school, so that was amazing, but yeah, we hope that you
Give it one more round of applause to our delegates, thank you.
There's actually more.
Oh.
Because gifts never end when it comes to students, notably the Student Advisory Council. So I hope all of you guys enjoyed all those hoodies. We were all wearing them, like, on the day of curation, and the photos looked amazing. But for one last surprise, you guys, the whole Board, at least, and honestly, the community, is invited to my graduation. My graduation is taking place on June 4th at 12:00 PM at Kesar Stadium, and I'm inviting all the Board members, including the superintendent. So I, I only have one ask mainly because there are tickets involved. So if you are able to come to my graduation on June 4th at 12:00 PM at Kesar Stadium, please, 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 email me by Friday, this Friday, at 4:00 PM, so I can solidify the tickets to make sure it's possible for you to attend. And I believe you could get my permission from Jetson. So yeah, I hope to see all of you guys there. And that is our delegate report. Thank you.
I will also acknowledge, a few weeks ago, commissioners, just for your awareness, Vice President Healy and I met with our student delegates and had an hour-long conversation around Board Governance. Y'all, I don't know, most people do not want to talk about Board Governance for an hour. So it is so encouraging to hear of you all putting your words into action, and so thank you so much for all that you're doing, and, and thank you for the hoodie. It's way cooler than me. Okay. Alrighty, moving to item E, public comment. To align with our effective governance model, public comment will last for one hour. We aim to respect staff, family, and community time by beginning new board business, by beginning board business, rather, no later than 8:00 PM. Our hope is to conduct board business in an effective, efficient, and accessible manner during reasonable hours. Each participant may speak for up to one minute. Staff will thank the participant at the one-minute mark. At one minute and five seconds, I've asked Mr. Steele to please turn off the mic and transition to the next speaker. I ask members of the public to please respect that one-minute limit, so we can hear from as many speakers as possible. I encourage speakers who are speaking on the same topic to collaborate and combine their comments, so that the Board can hear all viewpoints during our limited time. Please also note that the Board accepts written public comments via email to BoardOffice@sfusd.edu. You will hear first from students in person on agenda items, then general public in person on agenda items, followed by students in person on non-agenda items, and general public on non-agenda items. Regardless of whether in-person public comment is complete, we will save 15 minutes for remote public comment, so at 7:48, taking commenters in the same order as in person. As a reminder, Board rules and California law do not allow us to respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during public comment time. If appropriate, the superintendent will ask that staff follow up with speakers. Mr. Steele?
Thank you, President Kim. I'm going to call five students at a time. When you hear your name, please line up at the podium, and as President Kim said, you'll have one minute each, and forgive me if I'm mispronouncing names. So Liseth Chris Demo, I'm sorry. Can you see, can you see what that is? Daniel Agnos Kira, there's a Kira from Vis Valley, you can line up. Brittany Benitez, Mar, Mar, Maradona, and Isaac. And you can use this one if it's too tall.
I'm a student of Longfellow, and it's very important to keep this school open and for the, for the students and the Latina community.
Buenas tardes para todos los, todos los de la comunidad que están en esta noche, en esa tarde, y todos los que están del distrito de la escuela. Muy buenas tardes. Yo soy madre de estudiantes de Longfellow, y venimos apoyando a mis mari, que a la comunidad hispana la necesitamos en esa escuela. Es una, es una maestra muy entregada para toda la comunidad hispana, estudiantes, padres. para toda la comunidad hispana, estudiantes, padres, y desempeña muy bien su trabajo. Vemos con una, ah, en todo momento ella está presente en cualquier actividad, apoyando a los padres, apoyando a los alumnos, y queremos que se quede. Venimos en eso, que ella permanezca en la escuela. Gracias.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. So I'm a mom here at Longfellow. And so we're here to, well, to say hello to all of you, to all the people present. And also to, we're here tonight because we want to support Ms. Marty. She is an essential part of our school and also an essential part for the Latina community. She's a hard-working woman, that she's always there when we need it, when the community needs her, when the parents need it. And also, we need to have a Latina presence in our school. So I'm here to please tell you not to take her job away. Thank you.
And I go to visitation library and elementary school. When I was in kindergarten, I didn't know how to speak English. I didn't know how to speak Spanish. But luckily, because of Mr. R, he has helped me, helped me improve my English. And he has realized I should be proud of myself. I have improved on tricky letters, how to write in English. Also, because of him, my mom has improved her English. He has helped her in terms with my teacher. Stop the layoffs, stop the budget cuts. Say, Mr. R.
Hi, my name's Kira. I'm from San Francisco. I go to VVS. And when I was in first grade, he helped me feel more welcomed, like, for example, waving hi with a warm greeting smile in the morning. And without him, some students might not be acting like they're acting right now. He brings happiness and life, courage, and courage to this school. So now I say, stop the layoffs, stop the budget cuts. Say, Mr. R.
Dear Commissioners and Dr. Sue, I'm Daniel Agnos, and I'll be a fifth-grader student at Star King next year. Please do not squish the fourth and fifth-grade Mandarin classes into one. It would ruin the learning environment, and there are already people getting distracted enough, including me. Also, also, the classroom would barely fit 33 people. The teachers would also have to raise their voice a lot more just to get through a single section and could potentially lose it. It would be a lot more chaotic, a lot more annoying from the student's point of view, and lots more fights would happen because a teacher cannot be everywhere at once. Also, the teachers would have to teach fourth and fifth-grade curriculums all at once, which would be insanely difficult. Also, in Mandarin, the fifth grader would be listening to fourth grade all over again, and fourth graders will not understand the fifth-grade characters. I also spent my entire kindergarten in COVID, then we had to do Zoom. That was already hard and sad because no graduation ceremonies for us. So please do not make my last year worse. You'd be here. You'd be hurting my education and tons of others. We have worked so hard to get here and make up for how bad things were during COVID. You're supposed to make sure things go well at schools, and you would be doing the exact opposite by doing this.
Hello, my name is Isaac. I currently attend Rowell Wallenberg High School. Please don't get rid of my current job that I currently have. I currently work for SHAB. It helps you improve your leadership skills. It helps you attain time management. And the staff is so wonderful that they are understanding. They could really tell you what you need to improve on. And the call, and the high school students I currently work with are so incredible so that they tell me, like, what I need to improve on, what helps, and what doesn't help. And currently, we just finished a PSA contest where we stopped vaping and anti-smoking in high schools. And it helped really good to where it went through middle school, elementary, high school, and up. It showed us how we could stop anti-smoking at such a young age, to the point where smoking and vaping has damaged high schools and younger ages nowadays. And, yeah, that's all.
I have two more student cards. If you're a student and you didn't hear your name called, you can come up after I call these names as well. It's Mary Ann Brooks and Imad Hassan. You can come to the podium, please, and each have one minute.
Hey, my name is, my name is Thomas, what? Back up, okay, my bad. Hey, my name is Thomas Harrison. I am reading a letter from Lowell alumni. So this is a little bit abridged, but, um, "Dear members of the Board of Education, we alumni of the Lowell News publication are writing to condemn the actions of Lowell High School's administration regarding the independent student-run news publication and its advisor, Eric Gustafson. In October 2024, an article titled 'Invasive and Inappropriate' was published alleging instances of verbal harassment from teachers on campus. Months later, in April 2025, it was announced that Mr. Gustafson would be removed from his role as journalism advisor. According to the SF Chronicle, Gustafson claimed that the current principal, Jan Batista, stated this decision was due to the publication of the aforementioned article, as well as the discussion of a pitch regarding teachers' alleged usage of artificial intelligence. We are calling Lowell's administration to stop infringing on the journalist's First Amendment rights and reinstate Mr. Gustafson as the Lowell's advisor. This was written by three former editors-in-chief and has been signed by 64 different alumni." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas, and thank you, Board of Education, for your attention this evening. My name is Marian Brooks, and I am a member of Lowell High School's student-run publication, The Lowell. Earlier this month, we were incredibly shocked and saddened when our advisor, Mr. G, informed us that the administration had decided to reassign him following our work on several controversial topics. We on the Lowell have been experiencing anger, sadness, and anxiety over the potential implications of this decision. We firmly believe that this treatment is not reflective of the years of thoughtful and dedicated work Mr. G has put into our school publication. Losing our advisor means losing the experience, guidance, and leadership we count on to allow us to step into our own leadership roles. It is not in the best interest of the quality of work The Lowell produces or its status as a respected part of the school community to make this change. I sincerely hope that we can move forward and work with the administration to find a solution that does not involve removing Mr. G as an advisor. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Iman Ansari, and I'm a senior at Lowell and a photo editor for The Lowell. The situation regarding the reassignment of our journalism advisor is unacceptable. Mr. G has always been a positive figure throughout my time in journalism, and he goes the extra mile to make us feel comfortable and confident in our reporting. He ensures that we are able to grow and learn as journalists and also as people. This sentiment is shared by countless others. Former editors-in-chief of The Lowell created a petition to reinstate Mr. G that now has 481 signatures. Students of Mr. G's, as well as supporters of student journalism, have left comments on the petition, speaking on the amazing impact he has had on the program. So many share the sentiment that taking Mr. G away and threatening student journalism in a time like this, where many feel their constitutional rights are being threatened at a national level, is incredibly harmful. The reassignment of Mr. G is an injustice and poses a threat to student journalists, student journalists throughout SFUSD. I strongly urge and request you all to take action and support our right to free press. Thank you.
That concludes the students. I will go into agenda items. Alright, so we're moving on to agenda items. I'm gonna call the first five names. Please come line up. Sarah Wilson, Jessica Agnos, John Logan, Anna Clafter, and Latizia. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your last name. Zawr, Zawr Tio. Apologies. Come on up. One minute.
Who was first? Sarah. Want me to go first?
Hi, I'm Anna Clafter, and I'm the president of United Administrators of San Francisco. I'm here to implore you to lift the hiring freeze and let us hire staff for next year. There was a partial lifting, but there are still hundreds of school site positions vacant for next year. As site leaders, we did all the steps we were told. We held the SSC meetings. We wrote the SIPSS. We completed the confusing and onerous HRA process in frontline. And we know what we need to open school in August, but we are stuck. My colleague at another high school has 30 teacher openings right now, and she can't even hire the 12 temporary teachers currently in those positions. If we don't hire now, we will not be staffed in August, and children will suffer as a result. Stop this madness. Thank you.
My name's Sarah Wilson. I'm a researcher on staff at SEIU Local 10-1 and also a parent in the district. I want to comment on the, on the third interim report that you'll be presented tonight. What we've seen in the district's budgets and financial reports is that the district makes predictions, as is part of what you have to do to budget, that do not come to pass as predicted all the time. Yet, the district forges ahead with taking actions as a result of those predictions that harm students and workers unnecessarily, prioritizing adherence to a budget-balancing plan over the education of students and over the welfare of the staff who make our schools run. We've seen a projection of an increase in enrollment for next year after a few years of hearing that enrollment is going to plummet. We've seen twice as much in the, the third interim report, twice as much in the unrestricted general fund balance than was budgeted for. The budget-balancing plan should be adjusted accordingly and not just forged ahead with and cuts made that harm children and workers unnecessarily.
Sorry, it's a time, thank you.
Good evening. Jessica Agnos from Star King. We've spoken with many of you, and welcome Dr. Sue to our school. Our issue is how short-sighted our budget is. We haven't been allocated the teachers we need to make our Mandarin program function. There's also a legal issue surrounding compliance and mandated instructional minutes. If language pathways are a way to grow enrollment, why aren't we being supported? The decisions being made are further pushing families and teachers out of the district rather than enticing them to stay, which is harmful to long-term fiscal stability. Should youth enrollment to stay in compliance? Is that a better long-term plan than staffing us properly and keeping folks in SFUSD? As a student success fund, don't cut off my minute! That's a student success fund site! We're having a hard time reconciling how the community schools model is being truly supported at the city and the state level. This model and San Francisco taxpayer dollars should have proper protections to ensure success. Why aren't special considerations being made for community schools and language pathways? CDT has no jurisdiction over the student success funds.
Hi, my name is John Logan. I'm the father of two kids at Star King Elementary. Jessica, you're a hard act to follow. The staffing cutbacks targeting Star King are irrational and non-compliant. In specific, two Mandarin positions have been cut. These cuts and plans for, excuse me, class consolidation will result in class sizes that are too large and illegal, according to California state law. So, these roles would need to be refilled the year immediately after the cuts have taken place. We want to make very clear that a cut like this is irrational and damaging, and will only need to be reversed immediately. Short-sighted bureaucratic decisions that don't account for reality will accelerate attrition as families flee the public system for private schools. I am extremely proud of the diverse, multifaceted, and free educational programs that Star King currently supports. We need to keep these multi-program public schools alive and healthy.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Good day to you. But SEIU Local 10-1, I do not work for the district. I often get that question, but I do not. I work directly for the union. I just must say that first and foremost, I could never echo any of the comments that my predecessors, speakers, actually did because their passion and their commitment to this district is paramount. What I will say is that through this whole process of really realignment, the district stabilization, we're at this point where I don't think we're any better than we were six months ago. In terms of money, maybe, but in terms of process, no. We are truly a mess. We have not perfectly budgeted out things for the future. We are not allocating properly, and we have these blind layoffs occurring with no information to the unions to actually be able to really negotiate these layoffs properly. So let's do better, otherwise, we're gonna continue in this mess and have several Elliott Duchamps moving forward.
Okay, on the next group, Audrey Norton, Rachel Peterson, Darcy Chan Blackburn, Amy Saz, and Terry Kuzansky.
It's a song. Yes, it is. Good morning. Good evening, everyone. My name is Audrey Norton. I'm six years old and I'm an educator at Francisco Middle School. I am here to speak on behalf of myself.
Can you, can you just take a step?
Oh, yes.
The translator's here.
On behalf of myself, as well as the other SFUSD staff members, classified and certificated, who are adversely affected by decisions that the board tends to make. I am a classified SFUSD educator, which leaves me and so many other paras and family liaisons and security guards vulnerable to preliminary layoffs. Classified employees are not any less valuable or hard-working than certificated employees. The layoffs and the supposed budget-saving proposals being made are harming school staff everywhere in the district, which translates to harming the students' social, emotional, and academic outcomes as well. I have received preliminary layoffs in the past, and I am fighting the tail to get those.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Peterson. I'm a science and math teacher at Thurgood Marshall Academic High School. We serve an incredibly high-needs population, and we do pretty well, thanks to our amazing staff. Yet, key staff members are either on the chopping block with these pink slips or have been left in limbo waiting for a permanent contract. We need these people. They want to work at Marshall. We want them to stay. We even have the budget for them to stay. An unelected bureaucrat should not be able to manufacture staffing crises in our schools. As a district, we have enough issues with that already. I urge you to reverse course and let's keep our highly skilled and highly dedicated staff. Thank you.
Amy Saz, I'm a teacher at Longfellow Elementary, and I'm here to implore the board to rescind the family liaison layoff notices. Marty Mays has been with us for 12 years. She is the face the families know and love best. She's the first person they meet on tours, the one who helps them register, and the person who greets them every morning with the warmest, most... It's the most vulnerable families by providing them with translation, by helping them navigate the confounding systems put forth by SFUSD. The families know, trust, and love her. Know, trust, and love her. Choosing to take her away from the Longfellow can sure harm to our most vulnerable, who are the other supports in light of budget cuts. We know it's a position, not a person, but the lens shifts when it's a person. She is our person, and we ask that you allow her to remain in the community that so desperately needs her. Thank you.
My name's Darcy Chan Blackburn. I am a teacher at Sheridan Elementary School. I am here speaking in support of our paraeducators. You've heard all those stories here about how important and valuable they are in keeping our school stable. And they're clearly not being laid off for lack of need. As you heard from the students, the paras are the first people that our families see when they enter the school. Our paras help build the stability needed to address the many needs of our... Our pairs help build the stability needed to address the many needs of our families and students. Our sites have shown clear need to keep our pairs by designating site money to pay for them. Despite this, the layoffs have not been rescinded. This move to lay off our pairs and then the lack of movement to rescind them is clearly not due to lack of need or funds. It clearly appears to be a matter of someone imposing his control over our sites. His control is serving to stop us from creating the safe, stable, and supportive schools our students deserve. Do not let this person continue to destabilize our schools. Rescind the layoffs now.
Good evening, Superintendent and Commissioners. I'm going to pivot a little bit. My name is Teri Kohansky. I'm the Executive Director of Friends of Scrap. And I'm here, hello, I'm here to thank you all for, believe it or not, fifty years of a partnership supporting SFUSD teachers and students. Twenty-five years of that being spent at 801 Tolent Street, a San Francisco USD property. We so appreciate your generosity and thank you for your positive consideration of release extension tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call the next group. Richard Ag, I'm sorry if I mispronounced, Ag Cameron, Rebecca Hensler, Michelle Vidal, Najwa Ahmad, Najwa Ahmad, Ling Buzde.
I'm Rebecca Hensler. I've been a middle school counselor for over twenty years, but I've been activist for more like forty. Back in Act Up, we started the chant where you shout out communities that are under attack and you commit yourself to fight for them. Right now, LGBTQ students are under attack, black students are under attack, immigrant students are under attack, female students are under attack, educators are under attack, and you can fight for them, but instead you're sacrificing our most vulnerable students and their teachers and counselors to solve a budget crisis they had no role in creating. You are celebrating pride and history and appreciation while you betray them. You are complicit in the Trump agenda. If you don't fight for students and educators, who will? If not, when? Rescind the layoffs.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent, Student Delegates. My name is Najwa Ahmed. I am a current parent of SFUSD students, SFUSD grad, and I also sat as a student delegate many years ago. I want to first mention that two things also in April happened, which is the American, Arab-American Heritage Month. And also, we celebrated paraeducators and appreciated them. So, that is also in April. And that is why I am here to talk today, to speak especially about the R35 positions, especially about the central one for Angie Moreno. We really advocated, the shaws, the community health outreach workers, really advocated for this position to support them for many years. We've been advocating for it. And last year, finally, finally, after CDE approved it, it was hired and we were able to get this person to support our shaws. And then, we were able to create systems. We were able to create mentoring groups. We were able to support the youth outreach worker, the Student Health Advisory Board, where she saw Isaac come home and speak. And now, it's being taken away. Please, please reconsider.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Vidal. I'm the school social worker at Vis Valley Elementary School and a parent in the district in SFUSD. I'm here tonight to support my colleague, Mr. Jorge Rodriguez, on behalf of Vis Valley Elementary School. He is the glue that holds our school together. Please rescind his layoff notice. We cannot do this work alone. We cannot do this work without him. All of the people on our team are so invaluable and so important. We've been struggling to get our feet on the ground for a few years at Vis Valley and we can't start next school year without him. We have the money in our budget. Please rescind the layoff notice.
Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Sue, and Student Delegates, and happy Foster Youth Awareness Month. My name is Ling Bush and I'm a counselor with the Foster Youth Services Coordinating Program. And I can personally attest to the fact that our school counselors work tirelessly to support foster youth and all of our students. Tonight, the board decides on the fate of thirty-four counselors on the list for layoffs. But this is not just a staffing issue. It's a threat to the very support system our students rely on. Schools counselors manage academic and college planning, mental health, and safety concerns, and so much more. Without them, our already overworked teachers and administrators are left to pick up the pieces and it's not sustainable. What's especially frustrating is that despite schools asking to keep their, the support roles, the California Department of Education may block efforts to rescind layoffs. Why? Our students deserve better, especially our most vulnerable. This is wreaking havoc within our schools and further destabilizing our communities. Furthermore, the timeline for rescinding layoffs does not work. We must hire before the school year gets out.
Calling the next group, please come line up. Maxine David, Christine Matthew, Anna from Vis Valley. Amelia Rivera. Gina Silva.
Hi, my name's Anna Chan. I'm a third grade teacher at Vis Valley Elementary School. And following up with what Ms. Michelle said, first, I want to say really appreciative that there will be no teacher layoffs. But honestly, as a teacher, I cannot do my job without Mr. Jorge Rodriguez, Mr. R. He helps with attendance. He makes sure my kids are in class to learn. He helps my students and families with Spanish bilingual translation. He makes, he's made connections with those families for like the eight, nine years he's been at our school. He's helped with recess conflicts. I had a kid who was having a difficult day and her head was on the table. She was not engaging in a lesson. I asked her, what is, that you needed? And right away, she said, like, I just need to talk with Mr. R. She, she knew that like Mr. R would be able to help her out and that he cares about her. She trusts him. And then, got Mr. R and fifteen minutes with him and she came back ready to learn in the lesson. So, again, don't take Mr. R away from us. Please rescind all the layoffs.
Hello, my name is Amelia Rivera and I am the Community School Coordinator at Vis Valley, also here to ask you to rescind the layoffs and I'm here also advocating for Mr. R. As proud as I am to see our students here civically engaged, it's a school night. Ten-year-olds should be at home doing homework, resting, playing, not here, fighting for basic resources for their school, for their teachers, and for their parents. They're here advocating for their parents as well. We need, we are a community school. We take care of our whole community and our parents, our teachers, our students. We need people like Mr. R who are able to support our whole entire community. I am here also to deliver letters from parents, staff members, and students that they wrote for the board. We also have a petition with a hundred and seventy-three signatures at a school with two hundred kids. So, that's a hundred and seventy-three families that have signed. So, I please ask you, stop the layoffs.
Maxine David. I'm a paraeducator at James Lake Middle School. And I'm here to speak about the paraeducator layoffs, specifically the layoff of Kenna Hazelwood with the LGBTQ students, Student Services Department. We know that at least thirty percent of students in middle and high school in the district identifies LGBTQ. And we also know that when they have these programs and services, twenty percent are less likely to attempt suicide. So, what does it mean in a political era that's clamoring for violence against LGBTQ plus people? That we're so willing to put these programs last? That we're willing to lay off the people who are providing vital mental health intervention for our students? Thank you.
Women's Room Club is a question hurled my way over the years very often, thanks in large part to Kenna Hazelwood, SFUSD's current LGBTQ School Climate Coordinator. This position is classified as a paraeducator and Kenna was one of many to receive a layoff notice. Because of Elliot Duchan's refusal to authorize reversal of layoff notices, we will be losing the person in SFUSD's LGBTQ plus Student Services, effectively eliminating the department. SFUSD has the money to fund this one position and we cannot let Duchan, an unelected bureaucrat, don't away what SF residents voted for. We will have to fully fund our schools now. Also, I'm a teacher at Star King. All that stuff is like super illegal. We got to get that teacher back. Thank you all for your time.
Gina Share, Archivat Yeguo. You cannot solve years of mismanagement with more mismanagement. There are about a hundred open classroom positions with funding. We need to be hiring for these positions as permanent, not temporary. We're competing with other nearby districts. Teachers have a choice. We will lose quality teachers by not offering permanent contracts. We need to rescind these para layoffs. These positions have funding. We cannot let an unelected fiscal advisor, Elliot Duchan, continue to block the, maintain the hiring for these positions. We need fully staffed schools now.
Thank you. I'm calling the next group. Lisa Clinicky, Stefan Eldred, Araceli Ortega, Kaylee Pon, Maria Angie Moreno. Come to the podium, please.
Hello. Oh, okay. My name's Lisa Clinicky and I'm the Special Education Teacher at Visitation Valley Elementary School. There used to be two of us. Then, there was me and halftime and now there's only one. I can't tell you how much I rely on Mr. R because he helps with translation, communicating with parents, getting them much-needed information about meeting with me so I can support their students. And these para layoffs impact, impact our school greatly because he's not just a position, he's a person. And we want him at our school and we have the funding to have him at our school. And the, the layoffs notices are, they, they take away security, a sense of confidence. I mean, how would you feel if you got a layoff notice? And it's like, oh, you know, the position's there, but you know, we just have to lay you off. It doesn't feel very good. And so, I want to say it's insulting. And we need him at our school. He's an integral part of our school. He's the heart of our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Superintendent Sue, and Student Delegates. My name is Stephanie Eldred and I'm the Community School Coordinator at ER Taylor Elementary. We, next year, we're going to have over six hundred students. We're the second-largest elementary in the district. If these layoffs go through, we will lose six of our para-professional educators. We will lose our Community Relation Specialist that focuses on our families' needs. We will lose our School Climate Coordinator that works on school belonging and four instructional aides. It is an enormous school and we cannot do this work with the core staffing model. We ask you to rescind the layoffs. The money is in our budget between our Community School Grant, our Title I funding, and our Student Success Fund. And honestly, half the school, our principal didn't even know this was happening. He's too busy trying to hire. You're going to start losing administrators as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kaylee Pon and I am the School Climate Coordinator at ER Taylor Elementary School. I'm here to, tonight, to fight in solidarity on behalf of myself and five of my colleagues, paraeducators Veronica Moron, Saida Henderson, Juliana Cruz, and Jackie Lowe, and our Community Relation Specialist Adriana Delagadillo, as we have all received layoff notices that we are urging Elliot Duchan to allow districts to rescind. Our six positions collectively support all six hundred students at ER Taylor, especially those with the greatest academic and behavioral needs. Our paraeducators provide consistent academic interventions for our kindergarten and first-grade students. Our Community Relation Specialist maintains regular communication with families and strengthens our school community. I respond to behavioral challenges and provide restorative and conflict resolution strategies to create a safe learning environment. And that doesn't even cover all that we do day-to-day. ER Taylor has already allocated funds to, in our school site budget for our positions next year, which is why we need transparency and answers as to why Elliot Duchan can prevent our layoffs,
Thank you.
layoffs from being rescinded.
Thank you.
Right here. Okay, thank you. All right, perfect. Thank you. Thank you for your help. Okay. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Araceli Ortega. Soy madre de, soy madre. Pero sin mi adios, ciento veinte y tres despedidos que perdían el corazón de nuestras escuelas. Adriana, Saluna, y Alita, sones comunitarias, lleva casi diez años. Lleando a nuestras familias, la vida se viento, la ciudad, es el pueblo de nuestras escuelas y las familias. Y tan hablante, que somos el segundo grupo más grande, confiamos en ella. También defiendo a nuestros cuatro, Chiñana, Saida, Jackie, quienes son, quienes son, y quienes apoyan a los estudiantes más.
Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Araceli Ortega. I'm my mother. And I'm here to talk about that, all the layoffs that is happening in the schools. There are more than one twenty-three people that are being laid off. And unfortunately, this is the Spanish of the interpreter speaking. There were so many things that the interpreter couldn't understand because the person was talking very close to the microphone.
Okay, thank you. You can go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Angie Moreno and I am the Wellness, Health, Education, and Youth Leadership Coordinator. I am one of the R35s that has received a layoff notice. Earlier, my manager, Najwa Ahmed, was up here speaking on my behalf, as well as my student, Isaac Lisea. So, I just want to, I was here last month, I believe, talking about what I do. I support youth leadership programming. I also support the chows in thirty-four different schools. I provide consultation, professional development. These are all things that chows need in order to be able to serve students and families consistently. So, I'm just here as somebody, part of the community, asking you to please rescind these layoffs. Please don't give somebody else who's not part of our community power to do that. And please remember and reflect, what kind of ancestor will you be, will you be remembered for? I'm the digits community and I'm consistently reflecting on that.
Thank you.
Online comment at this time?
Yes, it's time for online comments. Thank you. All right, so we're going to go to virtual public comment on Zoom. We're doing students first. I see a lot of adult hands up, so we're going to do students first. So, please lower your hands if you are an adult. Can we have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas noches. En este momento vamos a comenzar con los comentarios públicos en línea. Vamos a comenzar con solamente los estudiantes. Si es un estudiante, por favor levanta su mano. Gracias.
Thank you. Raise your hand if you're a student and you care to speak to anything. Raise your hand if you're a student and you care to speak to anything on the agenda this evening.
So they can talk tomorrow.
All right, seeing none for students virtually. We'll be moving on to agenda items, so please raise your hand if you care to speak to an agenda item this evening. Again, we'll have one minute each.
Buenas noches. En este momento vamos a comenzar con las comentarios públicos que tienen que ver con la agenda. Cada persona tendrá un minuto solamente para poder hablar. Gracias.
Hola, hoy es el momento de la publicación de comentarios en el internet. Si quieres hacer un comentario, te pedimos que hagas el movimiento en nuestro sitio web. Levanta la mano, es decir, levanta la mano. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. JG, Riza, go ahead.
Apologies, that was the incorrect name. I'm Chris Koss, the SPED department head at Washington High School. SFUSD needs to keep layoffs far away from our students. Students need their counselors, assistant principals, paras in and out of the special education setting, security staff and our LGBTQ student services coordinator. Many of these positions are the people on campuses and in our district who build the strongest connections with our students, motivating them to regularly attend school and strive to do their best by connecting with them in the hallways, engaging with them in their classes and supporting them as they work towards graduation. One of these positions, our LGBTQ student services coordinator, literally ensures that our queer students survive. Thanks to this position in particular, our queer students are 20% less likely to commit suicide than the national average. Our state financial advisor Elliot Duchan may not think that these positions are important enough to keep. He may think that stalling the start of SPED hiring until May and continuing the hiring freeze for other positions won't hurt our students. But I know that having fully staffed schools and ensuring that students can survive and thrive because they feel supported is the most important reason to keep all of these positions and end the hiring freeze.
Thank you. Regina Marshall?
Oh, thank you so much, Mr. Steele. To the board commissioner superintendent Sue, on behalf of the San Francisco branch of the NAACP, Dr. Jonathan Bell, the president, Reverend Amy C. Brown, President Emeritus, we implore you to, we thank you, number one, that no teachers will be laid off. However, in the classroom, the classified staff then play a vital role in making sure our children are educated. So we implore you to rescind the layoff notice for the classified staff and look for funding to keep the classroom whole in September. That means a par professional. That means a par educator. That means all of those staff members. That means the security staff. All of those staff members that play a vital role in educating the whole child in SFUSD. Today, I was on a field trip with my granddaughter and I watched a child have a breakdown, meltdown. And I watched a par calmly bring him back and get him back into the group. So again, they play a vital role for us. Thank you so much.
Gina's iPhone.
Hi, my name is Gina Cargis and I'm a teacher librarian. I'm at Eldorado and San Francisco Community School. And so this month is Mental Health Awareness Month and there's been an incredible win in our district, which is that our queer students are significantly less likely to attempt suicide and experience bullying than the national average. This is a direct result of the services and support our district offers. In a moment where queer students are under attack nationwide, it's appalling and frankly violent to cut LGBTQ+ services as well as counseling in par positions. So we can sit here and say we're making these decisions for financial reasons, but the effect of cutting them is no more than an endorsement of the Trump agenda to erode queer rights and attack our kids. Mr. Duchan, whether it's your intent or not, you are implicating yourself and everyone at 555 Franklin and throughout the district in a future where our kids have higher rates of bullying and suicide attempts. Reinstate LGBTQ+ services now.
Thank you. Pamela O? Pamela Orgul?
Hello. My name is Pamela Orgul. I'm a teacher librarian at Longfellow Elementary and Hillcrest Elementary School. I'm also a parent at Longfellow Elementary School. I'm here to speak on behalf of support of Marty, our community outreach coordinator. She has a position that's R40. Like my colleague has said in past comments, she's the first person that families and students see at the beginning of the day and the last. She's a vital part of our community and the heart of our school. Please rescind her layoff notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Chen? Cindy?
Okay, great. My name is Cindy Chen and I'm a parent at Star King and parent advocate with SF Parents. I'm very concerned that the state has imposed hiring restrictions that will result in hundreds of classroom vacancies this fall. We've already experienced this this school year. This past August, two weeks before school was slated to start, our principal informed us that we had 10 classroom positions that were vacant in addition to an assistant principal position that was eliminated over the summer. The holdup, CD review of all positions last summer, even though we informed everyone that we had teachers retiring and heading out for mat leave months in advance. It took until October and November to get these roles filled. I'm urging the state tonight to lift hiring restrictions so that principals can fill classroom vacancies and all kids can have a qualified teacher in their classroom on the first day of school. This year, Star King is losing another two positions in our Mandarin immersion program. Mandarin cannot be taught in a combined grade format. It's a character-based language which requires characters and grammar taught in a tightly sequenced progression. Losing two teachers only to have to retire for the next school year is destabilizing for our entire school community and will result in more families leaving the public school system in lieu of private options. Thank you.
Kenna Hazelwood? Kenna?
My name is Kenna Hazelwood and I'm the LGBTQ student services coordinator for SFUSD. I remain one of the 123 par educators who stand to lose their job on July 1st. My job is synonymous with LGBTQ student services. Thank you so much for shouting out one small piece of my work and for your participation in the Rainbow Read Allow, Dr. Sue, but that's only a tiny amount of what I do. Since the current administration took office, I've been receiving increased requests for support from our students, staff and families. They're experiencing higher rates of harassment. Their simple desire to come to school and get to the business of learning and educating is being undermined by people who do not understand that LGBTQ-inclusive schools helps everybody feel more free to be themselves. The majority of my work is spent fostering, understanding and extending supports. We have numerous families move to SF to attend our schools because their homes are no longer safe. We have the money. If you cut this program in this moment where LGBTQ identities are under attack, is basically asking our most marginalized and vulnerable communities to be betrayed by the school system that they have put their faith in. SFUSD has historically been a beacon of hope for queer and trans community. Please continue to do so.
Thank you.
Rescind the layoffs.
Bernice Casey?
Hello, my name is Bernice Casey. I'm a parent of two children at SFUSD. I am very concerned that the district is trying to get rid of Ms. Hazelwood. I think what they just said is super important and my concern when the board makes decisions is that you're making these decisions without having a backup. What's your backup when you get rid of all these positions? What's your backup at Visitation Valley when you don't have those people? What's your backup at Star King when you have parents leaving en masse because you don't have enough teachers? What's your backup for our school Buena Vista Horseman? The way you've mishandled the transition from our site to another site? You need to have data about what's going to happen when you do these cuts. How is it going to impact your bottom line? How many lawsuits are you going to have because you are making decisions that harm children that are not child-focused? Thank you.
Thomas Reedy?
Good evening, student delegates, commissioners and superintendent. My name is Thomas Ready and I am a teacher at George Washington High School. I also have the privilege of being our school's LGBTQ liaison and position designed to promote inclusiveness, visibility and support. Liaison positions can only exist with the support of our district's LGBTQ support services, which are vital to the well-being of our district's diverse LGBTQ students and staff. I'm alarmed to learn that SFUSD has decided to essentially eliminate our district's LGBTQ support services for when you eliminate the only position in the program, you're essentially eliminating the services completely. I ask you to rethink and overturn this decision. This cut will be devastating to our LGBTQ students and staff such as myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Kern?
Hi, my name is Sarah Kern. I am the teacher librarian at Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy. Earlier this school year, I had the honor of speaking at a press conference held by Scott Wiener in recognition of trans rights being violated, taken away. There were many speakers from SFUSD, including Dr. Maria Sue, who vowed that our trans students would be protected and supported. And I do not understand how that is possible with the elimination of the LGBTQ student services position. Like Kenna mentioned earlier, we've had families come from other states to our district, to my school specifically. Without that position, I don't see how we could continue to support these families. We need to rescind that layoff notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Regina?
Hi, my name is Regina Fletcher and she, her pronouns. I'm a SFUSD grad and a current SFUSD teacher. I'm really urging you to keep our one and only LGBTQ coordinator position. As many other speakers have said, people come here, you know, as trans and LGBTQ families seeking safety. I have educator friends at private schools in Sacramento saying that trans students are, you know, coming to private schools. I have friends in Ohio who, after the bathroom ban, are homeschooling their children. It is, these things absolutely could happen here and it is so important that we have a dedicated person on the front lines and we already have a very qualified one. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our online public comment. We will be now going to our UE rep, Tiana Tilery.
Everywhere I go. There's a par standing there. Everywhere I go. There's a par standing there. Sometimes when you run out of words, you just gotta sing. Good evening, commissioners, superintendent, educators, students, families and community. My name is Tiana Tilery. I'm the vice president of the par educators with the United Educators of San Francisco. I'm also a proud par educator, 25 years here in SFUSD. And I come before you again tonight, not for the first time and not for the last time, for sure, to speak on behalf of the 123 par educators whose futures hang in the balance. I've spoken to you every meeting since the passing of the workforce reduction resolution. I've brought you testimony. I've shared personal stories. I've lifted up the voices of the people who show up every single day to support our students. But tonight, I want to be absolutely clear about what I'm asking for. I'm asking you to rescind the layoffs of all par educators, all of them. I'm asking you to allow these paras to return to SFUSD in open positions that are being funded for the 25, 26 school year. I'm asking for you to truly consider the needs of our students, our families and our school communities and how these par educators and how without these par educators, the harm that can be caused. Because what is happening to us? What has been happening to us for years? It's not just an administrative decision. It's not just about numbers. It feels, quite honestly, like we're in an abusive relationship. Let me explain what I mean by that. You tell us how much you need us. How the work of supporting the whole child cannot be done without us. But when preliminary layoff notices and final notices are sent out, what does that mean? I thought you needed us. It seems like this relationship is one-sided, but yet we're still here begging you to take us back. Because we love our students, we love our schools, we love our families. O Us. And we love our school district. Even though it doesn't seem like they love us back. By the way, I want to take a moment to say Happy California Teachers Association Education Support Professional Day that will be happening next Tuesday. I truly appreciate all that our par educators do here in SFUSD, including instructional aides, elementary advisors, student advisors, attendance liaisons, naturalists, family liaisons, child welfare attendance liaisons, school climate coordinators, school community aides, central office par educators who support all sites and those that provide Chinese, Spanish and Arabic so that our families can communicate with the school sites. I appreciate all of your commitment to our school communities. And if you didn't know, those are the positions that we're potentially, well, that we are laying off. Par educators have shown up for us. They showed up for this district with loyalty, with heart, with strength. We are the steady hands guiding students through challenges. We're the ones that listen when no one else will. We help kids feel safe, seen and supported. We communicate with families. We de-escalate conflict and we walk the halls. We knock on doors and we hold space for every single child, especially the ones who are hurting the most. And in return, we get silence, we get threats, we get uncertainty. We get pink slips. Every year, we're told to hold on, that maybe this year we'll be safe. That maybe this time we won't be, that maybe this time we'll be spared. We hear things like, it's just a budget issue. It's nothing personal. But it is personal. It's personal when you dedicate your life to a job and year after year, you're told you might not have one. It's personal when you're told by your admin that your position is safe only to have hope shattered by layoff notices without warning, without care, without accountability. It's personal when you're working with students who depend on you every day while knowing that the district has already decided to let you go. It's the emotional manipulation, the mixed messages, the lack of transparency, the way we're made to feel like we should be grateful for whatever scraps of security we're offered. That's what being in an abusive relationship looks like. And now here we are, again, waiting for the final blow. Final layoff notices will be sent out in just a couple of days. Do you understand how triggering that is? Do you understand how painful it is to show up to work on May 16th? To walk into the classrooms, into school sites, into district offices, to smile at kids and coworkers, to support teachers, all the while knowing that our time is being cut short? We'll still be working till June. Still, everything that we have to our students, still giving the district the best of us, even after being told we're no longer wanted, we no longer belong. This is more than just a paycheck. It's our community. This is our purpose. And it's being taken away coldly, and in many cases unnecessarily. Why do I say unnecessarily? Because right now, school sites across the district, there are open funded positions available. There are vacancies for the 2526 school year that can easily be filled by many of the 123 Paraeducators that you're laying off. In fact, schools have already earmarked money to pay for these positions, and yet our people have not been offered the jobs. Why is that? Oh, no, y'all can't answer me, that's right. Can't talk to me. Why are we pretending that there's no money when there is money? Why are we acting like there's no money? When the money is already allocated? Why are we putting people through this pain when the solution is sitting right in front of us? Elliot Duchesne, I'm asking you personally. Allow our Paraeducators to continue to do the work they've already been doing in the schools and in the communities they already serve. Don't let this become a memory we look back on with regret and shame. You have the power to do something right, something just, something humane. And to my commissioners, I know you have a job to do. I know you're navigating complex budgets, state mandates, tough decisions. I understand that. But we have a job to do too. We're the ones trying to keep the cuts away from the students, just like you are. But not the budget cuts, the emotional cuts. We're trying to minimize the harm. But what you fail to realize is that we're creating more harm. We're not extra, we're not optional. I know we're uniquely made, SFUSD. I've been to other states, when I say San Francisco, and they say, "Oh." I get it. But they not like us. They not like us. We have positions to support the whole child. They cannot even begin to learn if we can't get them into the seats. They cannot begin to learn if they're still dealing with the violence that is happening in their community and they don't know how to express it, so they act out. These are the things that our Paraeducators help to support, the whole child. These positions are so needed, even if you think that they are not, they are. We've been patient. We've been hoping for the best, but we're hurting. We're tired. I'm tired. Rescind the layoffs. I don't know what else to say. Like, rescind the layoffs. Let's continue to do what we do best, serve our students, strengthen our schools and support the families of San Francisco. Don't let May 15th become a scar that our district carries for years to come. Choose a different path, choose care, choose justice. Thank you.
I want to thank members of the public for coming here today to share your experiences, provide us feedback. I know many of you have also emailed the board, many of your thoughts. And we've heard from a lot of schools, educators, community members. So I just want to say, first and foremost, thank you for your time. Thank you for your dedication to our families, students and our schools. And we look forward to partnering with you to make some of the more challenging conversations and decisions that we have ahead of us. But I just want to underscore our gratitude for everyone being here today. It is late on a school night and you all have a voice. And so you are exercising that, and I thank you so much. So, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and move us along. To align with student outcomes focused governance, the superintendent and her team are tasked with providing a draft of each agenda 12 days in advance. Once that draft agenda is made public on our website, board members have made a commitment to submit clarifying and tactical questions. And staff have made a commitment to respond to those questions in advance of each board meeting. If you can please watch your volume just as you transition out of the room, that would be greatly appreciated.
She wants to lick them again.
I did lick them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. This Q and A doc is linked into each board agenda on board docs. We invite the public to review those questions and answers alongside our discussion today. Additionally, to create more space focus on student outcomes, we'll be moving most items to our consent calendar and identifying only our highest priority agenda items to discuss. Board members are reminded not to restate questions answered by staff in advance, but instead to bring forward strategic questions that allow us to better understand our progress towards our goals and the underlying strategies so that we can be better informed in our decision-making and to partner with the superintendent as we hold her accountable. Moving to item F, Advisory Committee Reports and Appointments, Item One. Resolution to appoint a member to the Independent Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, or CBOC. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Still moved.
Seconded.
I call on the superintendent, or does he need to read this into the record?
What, where?
Yes, yes, I can do that. Good evening, Commissioners, Lysinia Berry, Director of the Bond Program. The item before you is Appointment of a New CBOC Member, Min Chang. Min Chang would be sitting in the senior, or associated with a senior organization seat. This is a seat that's defined in the ed code as required on a CBOC. And there was an application process. She was the only person that indicated that she was a member of a senior services organization, and that is why the appointment is before you tonight.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call vote, please, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. On the CBOC appointment, Student Delegate Montgomery.
Yes.
Student Delegate Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta.
Yes.
Vice President Huling.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright Award.
Yes.
President Kim.
Yes.
Seven O's.
Moving to item G, Discussion Items. Item One, 2025 Update on School Facilities. Oh, there we go.
Hi, good evening. I'm Karen Sullivan. I'm the Executive Director of Facilities and Capital Planning. I'm joined tonight by Lysinia Berry, Bond Program Director, and Meli Laus Smith. And we are here to provide an update on the work that has been done in the Facilities Department over the past year. Next slide, thanks, Johnson. Oh, I think one before this. Great. To start off, we wanted to provide some context on our department. Within the Facilities Division, there are three different programs. That includes Facility Services, Capital Planning, which I oversee, and the Bond Program, which is overseen by Lysinia. Our portfolio includes 155 facilities. Within that 155 properties, there are 120 school sites. And as you can see from the square footage numbers, you know, the total of our square footage within the building envelope and the exterior square footage is in excess of millions of dollars. Next slide, please. This is an overview of the funding that is available to the Facilities Department on an annual basis. I think this slide really highlights the importance of the Bond Program. You can see that funding from the Bond is far in excess of funding that would otherwise be available for capital improvements. Based on the condition assessments that were completed in 2022, even with bond funding, we still are not able to meet all of the repair and replacement needs that we would need to make to bring our facilities, to address all the needs at our facilities. Next slide. And so, since our need is greater than the funds that are available, we use the Facilities Master Plan that was approved in 2023 to help us prioritize our capital, our capital funds to the highest priority projects. So this update will include an overview of projects that were completed in 2024, projects that are currently underway, and things that we have planned in the coming years. And so, in order to identify capital projects, our Facilities Department works in close coordination with the different programs. And so, our Buildings and Grounds Department is responsible for preventative maintenance. They also learn about reactive repairs through our work order system. For repairs that are outside the scope of buildings and grounds, they are forwarded to our Capital Planning Department. And then, those projects are prioritized and assigned to either our Facilities Design and Construction Team or our Bond Program. And so now I'm going to give a brief update on the programs within our division. For Buildings and Grounds, their priority over the past year has been ongoing maintenance. There have also been some significant investments made into improving air quality and indoor heating systems, as you can see on this slide. And on this slide, this is an overview of all of the capital investments that were made in fiscal year 2024, both by our Facilities Design and Construction Team that oversees projects funded without bond sources in our Bond Program. I think something to highlight here is that with both of our programs, we were able to touch 108 sites. And what we like to see when we look at this map is there was also a lot of geographic diversity throughout the city. In our Facilities Design and Construction Department, our focus is on improving water quality through the installation of filtered water access points, making investments into core functionality, so systems that preserve the building envelope, helping with the rollout of universal transitional kindergarten, and then supporting our goals around outdoor learning. The chart on the right provides an overview, so just a little more detail about what's included in core functionality. And as you can see, there have been significant investments into our building systems. And these investments are really focused on preserving the building envelope, so waterproofing, structural improvements and roof replacements. And now, I think I'm going to pass it over to Lysinia to talk more about the Bond Program.
Great. The Bond Program's major programmatic focus in fiscal year 24 has really been the security program, as we've been implementing PA system improvements across the district to ensure that all schools have a compliant PA system. A major area of focus for us has also been completion of the modernization program from the 2016 bond, and initiating our core functionality improvements as part of our bond-funded investments. We have also entered into partnerships on schoolyard improvements with the SFPUC and Cal Fire. We have four schoolyard renovations starting construction this summer. And we will celebrate the completion of the Everett Middle School Schoolyard Renovation next week. As for what we're doing moving forward into the next year, Buildings and Grounds and FDC will continue with the investment priorities that Karen just spoke about earlier in the presentation. And we're also adding restroom upgrades, which is a core functionality priority that we consistently hear from stakeholders. The Bond is really focused on beginning implementation of the 2024 program. We can go to the next slide. We have begun sharing school sites where the first group of 2024 bond investments will begin, focusing on sharing information with site leaders as we begin a partnership with them that will last several years between the Bond Program and these sites. We're also continuing implementation of the split funded projects that we shared with the board earlier this year. And as for process, during stakeholder engagement for the 2024 bond planning process, the Bond Program assembled guiding principles to select sites where projects would occur. Importantly, in that process, we committed to transparency, to actually sharing with our stakeholders and our community how decisions were made. And so this slide provides some information. The criteria that was used was geographic diversity, looking to spread the investment across San Francisco neighborhoods, ensuring we had a mix of school types, early ed, elementary, middle and high schools, a range of project sizes in terms of dollar value and complexity. And then, that we use the data that we have now, so the Facility Condition Index scores, facilities data that we have from our conditions of electrical HVAC and plumbing systems. And then, you know, sort of as a tiebreaker, if you will, eligibility for the state facilities program was also a major criterion, as I think most folks know, the state also has a bond and we want to be able to leverage those funds to extend the life of our own program. And so, we are excited to get started with this ambitious program. And this concludes our facilities update.
Thank you so much. I also want to thank you for your time in our briefings to provide us some information in advance. And a reminder to the commissioners that there were many questions that were answered by staff in this. Given it's a discussion item, I'll open it up for conversation. We'll start with one question per commissioner and we'll see how far we can get with that. Are there questions from fellow commissioners? Seeing none? I'm just kidding. Just kidding, I was trying, I was really. Commissioner Ray.
Hi there, good evening, and thank you for the detailed question, detailed answers to the questions. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to get a sense from you, this wasn't more of a specific question, which is why I didn't raise it before, but what do you feel are the biggest challenges facing the Bond Programs and, you know, facing the various projects that we're doing? And I'm wondering how you approach those.
I could really talk for hours on that topic, but I know that President Kim will not allow me to do that. So, I would say that the biggest challenge facing us at every site, every time we initiate a project is scope of work and trying to fit a project within a budget that makes sense, both for, to meet the critical needs of the site while not spending our entire program allocation there at that one site. And so, scoping is full of difficult decisions. And yeah, I would say that's the biggest challenge.
This isn't, it's not really a question, just a real appreciation for the work that you do and everything that you've done to help facilitate partnership throughout the city as well. I, this update doesn't do justice to the amount of work that's been put in to bring Shirley Chisholm Village to fruition over the past couple of years. The amount of work that's been done, not just internally, but with our building partners. You know, the amount of work that went into last year's bond. It's just the collaboration with the Mayor's Office of Housing and Community Development, just all the work that, I just want to thank you for everything that you're doing to make safe spaces for our students to learn. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Kim. Thank you all. Just one question I had was on Shirley Chisholm. I noticed that we're not at 100% vacancy, 100%. Just one question I had was on Shirley Chisholm. I noticed that we're not at a hundred percent vacancy, a hundred percent of our homes occupants. Ah, you'd think I'd know that, right? I'm curious if you could say a little bit more about what's happening there.
I can. We were actually just talking about that today. So at Shirley Chisholm, we have one hundred and thirty-five units that are available. One hundred and thirty-four, when you take out the manager's unit. To date, we have ninety-nine units that have been leased to S F U S D employees. There's five who have move-in schedules. So that gets us to a little, oh, close to eighty percent leased up by S F U S D employees. There is a set of units, about seventeen, that have really specific income and accessibility requirements. And so within that seventeen, those units, those seventeen units, three of them were leased to S F U S D employees, and the balance had to be released to the general public, which is the third tier. Our first tier is teachers, S F U S D teachers. The second is other non-educator employees, and the third is the general public. And so we just didn't have anyone on our waitlist to apply who met these really specific income and then accessibility requirements. And so that leaves us, at this juncture, a balance of twenty-one units that remain to be leased up. We are hopeful that the balance will be filled by S F U S D employees. And, but if we exhaust the waitlist, then we will move to the general public at that point.
Thank you. And I'll just wrap by echoing Commissioner Fisher's gratitude. I had the pleasure of listening in to Commissioner Fisher. She shared more information regarding Shirley Chisholm with C S B A delegates who are in town. And it truly is serving as a model for other districts in the state. So thank you so much for your work. And with that, I bid you adieu. Thank you.
Yes.
Moving on to Item H, action items. Item one, two, five, five, dash, one, three, S P one, Superintendent's Proposal to Declare May as National Foster Care Month. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion. Yes, I so move. Thank you. Second.
Call on the Superintendent, or does he need to read this into the record?
Thank you, President Kim. This resolution is to update the data within an already existing resolution that was originally passed by this board in two thousand and four. It is an opportunity for us to bring greater awareness about the needs and experiences of our students in foster care. So, foster care. Additionally, since two thousand and four, the California Department of Education revised the Local Control Funding Formula to identify children and youth in foster care as students who need additional supports. S F U S D receives funding accordingly, and therefore, this resolution aligns with our V V G Gs and our L C A B. That's it. Yes. I hope you all support it.
Are there any comments from the board?
Yeah, thank you very much, Superintendent Sue, for proposing this. I guess I just want to make sure that this declaration is followed up by concrete action steps on the board, so that we're not just, because I think there's been a history in S F U S D of making bold statements about justice and equity and then not following through. So I'd like to make a request that when we look at our monitoring reports around our academic goals, when we go back to that, that we look at data on foster youth, and that we also incorporate plans to support foster youth, you know, whether it be around the goals or guardrails on particular strategies, so that, so that we're not just sort of having a resolution, but we're actually tying it to the work of goals and guardrails.
I appreciate Commissioner Alexander's comments and wholeheartedly second those. And I just really want to appreciate everyone who brought this resolution to us. As a former foster parent myself, you know, this is an issue near and dear to my heart. And I can confidently say that I wouldn't be sitting in this seat if it hadn't been for my experience as a foster parent. So good things happen when you foster. I also want to point out that San Francisco is in desperate need of foster homes right now. We have need for more than one hundred foster homes right now. So if anyone is interested, please visit foster-dash-S F dot org. That's the website where you can get more information. And it's quite the fun journey. I a hundred percent recommend. So please help support our youth here in San Francisco.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Please, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. On the combination for making the May National, or recognizing May as National Foster Care Month, Student Delegate Montgomery?
Yes.
Student Delegate Lam?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Heeling?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Waisner Ward?
Yes.
President Kim?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Moving to Item two, two, five, five, dash, one, three, S P two, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, Third Interim Financial Report for the San Francisco Unified School District. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
I will call on the Superintendent, or does he need to read this into the record?
Thank you, President Kim. I am going to invite Ms. Laugh Smith, Melie Laugh Smith, our Executive Director of All Things in the District, and Ms. Anne Marie Gordon, our interim chief, our interim chief of financial officer. Before they start, I do want to just, number one, thank them and the team for doing really, really hard work over the last several months. It is, our budget is a beast. It is very difficult. There's lots of moving parts inside it. And I just greatly appreciate both of these leaders who have been able to jump in and, and spend hours and hours in combing through our budget, trying to make heads and tails of it, and, and doing their best to produce a budget that not only makes sense, but is going to be viable for us to make really hard decisions, as well as a budget that is coherent and understandable for the rest of our community. So I just want to acknowledge how amazing these two are, and I just greatly, greatly appreciate both of them for just all of, all of your hard work and countless hours that you're spending on our budget. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Laugh Smith.
Thank you, Superintendent Sue, and good evening Commissioners and Student Delegates. It's great to be here early enough to have you during the presentation to hear your comments. Appreciate the time. Wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to present to you the Third Interim Report. And as Dr. Sue said, I'm joined by Anne Marie Gordon, our interim Financial Services Officer, who will co-present with me. I did want to, both Anne Marie and I are very aware that we present a lot of numbers, but we know that behind every number, there's a story and there's a person. So while we will be talking about numbers, we're aware that there's a lot of hard decisions that come with the information we're sharing. Tonight is the last of three interim reports that we're presenting to you this fiscal year. And as we shared with the second interim report, the reports are an opportunity that provide a snapshot of the state of the district's budget by identifying changes to the revenues, the expenditures, and the fund balance. They also provide multi-year projections for the following two fiscal years. And so for this report, the Third Interim, we'll be looking at fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven and twenty-eight for the first time. So we're getting another window into, further into the future. Unlike the first two interim reports, the Third Interim Report does not include a certification. Oh, we, I didn't even ask to have the slide. Sorry. Go to the next slide. This slide summarizes the steps the board has taken since June, two thousand and twenty-four towards implementing the Fiscal Stabilization Plan. And tonight's presentation will focus on the Third Interim and really show you the progress that we've made towards the one hundred and thirteen point eight million dollars worth of reductions that we'll be incorporating into the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget. After tonight's meeting, we'll be back in early June for the first reading of that proposed budget. And then, at a subsequent board meeting, we'll be presenting the final recommended twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year budget. And I'll turn it over to Anne Marie for the next slide.
Thank you, Melie. Good evening, everyone. So Melie already shared some of the context behind why Third Interim. We do typically present just two interim reports in a year, but because any district with a qualified or negative certification at second interim is required to submit a third interim later in the spring. So that is why we're here. Third interim, when you're looking at the report, looking at the data, it is a snapshot as of April thirtieth, but it is meant to project our ending balances as of the end of the fiscal year. So it's also seen as a year-end projection. If you look at, at the data in the actuals on the, the report itself, because we're here presenting a little bit earlier than is required, we, the actuals are a little bit earlier point in time than you would typically see if we were bringing this forward in June. But the focus of the report is really on the budget and the projected totals. Next slide, please. You'll also see that we do not have a Third Interim Report for our county office. That is because our county office has had a positive certification for its interim reports forever, I think. But at least recently, because the qualified and negative certification is only applied to the district, you will only see a Third Interim Report for the district. Next slide. As we move through these slides, just for a visual cue, any table that has blue headers is the unrestricted general fund, and any table with orange headers is the restricted general fund. It does mean that on these slides, we don't actually have one combined total of our general fund, and that is something that we can bring forward with the recommended budget, so that you can see both sides of our general fund combined as one. Here we see our unrestricted general fund. This is the update for Third Interim as compared to Second Interim in March. As you go through, you'll see that, I guess the takeaway is that our unrestricted general fund has, our forecast this year has slightly improved. This is due to a, an increase in some of our local revenues, which you'll see in row B. This is specifically leases and rentals and some of our interests that we get. The, those projections are higher than what we originally estimated. And then you'll see in our total expenditures and contributions, our budget has gone debt. We've made a few reductions. This is meant to help better and more accurately reflect what we expect to spend by the end of the year. This is something we're continuing to try and improve, is how we project where our spending is really going to land by the end of the year. So we're hoping that this, we believe that this will be more reflective of where we're going to land. That said, while this is an overall improvement, when you look at row D, our net surplus or shortfall, you can see that we do continue to deficit spends. That number has come down by quite a bit over the course of this year, but it is still challenging when we expand to look at our multi-year projections. Next slide. So here we have the orange header, so the restricted general fund. This is all of our restricted funding from all sources across the district. And you'll see here, we actually have had a slight increase to our budget, as well as a smaller but slight increase to our revenue. There aren't significant changes here compared to Second Interim in terms of patterns and, and spending. The, the increase that you see in the budget is driven by an adjustment to our routine maintenance budget. This is a required, this is a required portion of our budget every year. And I'm actually, I'm not sure, this may have been something that was discussed maybe slightly briefly at First Interim. It was a, it was a fairly large adjustment that we made to the way we were budgeting for those funds. And basically, we made one initial adjustment in the fall as we were correcting the budget, but there was one more adjustment that was required this spring. So I think, happy to share more if we need to, but it's something that I wouldn't expect to see another swing of this size in the future. I think the adjustment was basically identified and corrected in the fall. And so now, as we're going into budget development, we are clear on how the budget needs to be set up moving forward, and so we wouldn't need a large mid-year adjustment in the future. Next slide. So similar to Second Interim, and as we see up here, we, we are required, when we submit our multi, our interim reports, when we submit them to C D E, we're required to show what our multi-year forecast looks like without having made reductions. This is a requirement. And so this is, right, what we're going to look at here is first, what our forecast looks like without reductions, and then we will come back and look at, having implemented reductions, what we expect to see. We have added the two thousand and twenty-seven, twenty-eight projected budget, that far right column. It isn't actually required in the Third Interim Report, but we wanted to get an early look at what two thousand and twenty-seven, twenty-eight is going to look like. And when we come to you in June with the budget, that will be officially part of our multi-year projections. And we will speak more about the long-term plan at that time. But here, we did want to at least show what, what the trends look like and where things stand. So overall, going through these projections, both the revenue and expenditure growth is updated based on Local Control Funding Formula estimates, essentially going through all of our major funding sources to estimate what reasonable changes we expect to see over this time period. And the same goes for expenditures. There's always a little bit of growth in salary and benefit costs, a few adjustments of that nature, but no other significant changes because we have to demonstrate what it looks like before we've made more significant changes. And so what you see, highlighted in yellow, is our pattern of deficit spending continuing and growing. Our revenue does grow a bit, and so that helps keep the deficit spending from growing sort of exponentially, or I guess in a more significant way. But ultimately, what you see is over the next few years, we would be drawing down both the rainy day reserve and our budget stabilization reserve. And within a couple of years, we would not be able to meet our financial obligations without taking action. Next slide. The overall pattern on the restricted side is similar. This is similar, similar assumptions around our revenue growth or change and our expenditure growth and change. So you can see that without making any reductions, if we were to continue to spend at the rate, or budget at the rate that we currently do, we would spend down our available restricted funding over the next several years as well. I do think it's important to note here that this picture is not quite, I feel this is, this doesn't reflect the fact that we are knowingly deficit spending so that we can spend down one-time funding sources, right? This is sort of a, if, if we truly weren't to do anything, but right, we've, we've taken action over the past few years to account for how we spend short-term funding or one-time funding. So really here, we do have to acknowledge, though, that some of the funding that we have available to us will expire or will spend it, and it will not be backfilled. And so we have to really be thoughtful about how we plan for what we can provide and what we can guarantee once that funding is used. And then finally, I think one note that we've added that is, that we hadn't specifically built in to Second Interim is that we are using a portion of our P E F, Other General Uses Funding, to support our special education overall budget. We are currently using, I believe, about thirteen million this year, and we plan to increase that to twenty-five million next year and forward. So that is built into the total expenditures that you see here.
So getting to being able to look, look at the multi-year projections with reductions, we have the Fiscal Stabilization Plan that is guiding that process, and it was first introduced with the twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget. And it did outline the reductions that are necessary to balance the budget through fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. The district and the board recommitted to this plan both in December- The district and the board recommitted to this plan both in December and March at the first and second interim. We're going to share with you today the revised fiscal stabilization plan. We've been spending more time looking at it deeply and making adjustments to accurately reflect the reductions that are underway as part of the budget development process. And these reductions will be built into the 2526 recommended budget. Uh, you can go to the next slide, please. This is a lot of numbers and, um, it is a bit to go through. We added, um, for the first time, the savings from the SERP, the supplemental early retirement plan, both in positions that were eliminated. So you can see the savings for the positions that were eliminated. Plus we added what would be the salary savings for positions we continued and looking at the difference between the average, what an average salary would be and the salary that the person who is retiring is and what that difference would be. We also added that the cost of the supplemental early retirement program is at about $5 million a year. So we backed that out of, um, the adjustments. And even with backing that out, we still, we're at about 111 million dollars, 111 million point three, I think, if I can see from here. And we will continue to work looking at non-FTE, both contracts and supplies. You will also notice that we, while we did, we are no longer eliminating middle school bus transportation for next fiscal year. We want to give ourselves more time to let folks know about that. We have been able to move those costs onto restricted monies for the one time. So we were able to, um, look at that as a savings towards our fiscal stabilization plan. So we continue to work towards this and when we come in June, we'll also include an updated fiscal stabilization plan that will reflect the cuts that are in the 2526 proposed budget. So those two will align.
So here we can now see what our multi-year projections look like, having implemented and incorporated the reductions that are in the fiscal stabilization plan on the previous slide. So essentially, this is a significant improvement. I think that that's important to note first off is that when you look at the, this, the magnitude of deficit spending, right, row D, the reductions that are in the fiscal stabilization plan essentially cut deficit spending in half for next year, which is right, that is significant and significantly positive. That allows us to maintain our rainy day reserve for another year. It allows us to draw down the budget stabilization reserve in sort of the, the way that we intended to, that we could over time align our budget. And that reserve would actually help us do that in a, a gentler way or a more gradual way. And it does mean that right now in 2027, 28, we are slightly in the red. That's the negative 1 million at the very bottom right of the table. Means that we'd be required to have about 31 million in our fund balance, and this is projecting just under 30. But, and so that is some of what we'll be looking at as we go through the recommended budget, right? Bring in this, this year officially as part of our multi-year projections and have that long-term plan for how we make sure that ideally, we might have a little bit more than just the bare minimum in our fund balance by the end of 2027, 28. But for a first look, this does feel like a very solid step in the direction that we want to be heading. I do think in the long run, it is important to note that we are still deficit spending, uh, right? We haven't fully gotten to where we would ideally get over a longer period of time. But it is an improvement. And also noted on the slide is that this multi-year projection does not currently include any assumptions about negotiated salary increases. As a legal requirement in these reports, we are meant to reflect any commitments that have been settled. And so because we have not settled and we are in open negotiations about salary increases, there is nothing that we are required to incorporate until we have finalized what our financial obligations would be.
And one other additional thing was the fiscal stabilization plan that was approved by the board in June 2024 had included 13 million of cuts for, projected for 2627. We are a little bit higher, a little more than double that. So there will, when we come, um, in June, we'll have some recommendations for fiscal stabilization plan revision for the 2627. Project, I mean, I'm sorry, 2526 projected, no, I'm losing my mind right now. 2526 projected budget, I'm sorry.
And that is actually on this slide. Because those, those, the, the original fiscal stabilization plan included the additional reductions on the restricted side, where we have block grants that are expiring, where we plan to fully spend the money that we have. But then once we've spent the money, right, we have to then reduce our, our budget. We have to reduce our spending expectations where we're no longer going to have money to support that spending. And so what you see here is really a similar, a sort of a similar picture where we, we are still deficit spending again on the restricted side because we're managing one-time funding that we received in one big allocation already. It means that that money is sitting in our fund balance and we have to spend it down. It has to look like we're in the red in order to actually maximize all of the money that's there. But what you can see is that we draw it down without getting to the point where we have overspent what we have. And really, I think on the restricted side, you know, as we'll, we'll, we'll get more information. I realize I'm jumping to the next slide, we don't need to go there yet. As we, or as new funding sources come into the district, they're most often restricted. And it just means that there's more that we have to be really thoughtful about when it comes to our planning. We just have to be tracking what funding we have available, how it can be used and how it all fits together because it is, it can be complicated, but it really is a puzzle that we're trying to fit together in the way that makes the most sense for, for, for our district, for our students and for our schools. So, um, with that, I think we can go to the next slide. Right? Although the budget stabilization plan is a very challenging plan to commit to and to stay committed to, it does, it is helping us take the steps we need to stabilize our budget. We expect to get an update on big picture funding factors from the state as part of the May revise, which should be released this week. Any impacts on our budget will be kind of interpreting and then bringing forward as part of the budget next month. Any, right, if there happen to be any, any major updates, we'll obviously keep you informed as soon as we know. And then in general, everything that we can incorporate will be incorporated so that the recommended budget is the most up-to-date, most accurate picture of, of what next year will look like for, for the district. So, um, I think one final note, as you look at the documents, the third interim is a slightly smaller report compared to first and second interim. The, it's mainly the update on the current year, the multi-year projections and cash flow. We don't provide all of the other supplemental forms, they're not a requirement. So, um, please let us know if you have any questions. But it is sort of, this is more, more comprehensive of the entire report that we submit to CDE compared to a full interim report that has some additional information. Thank you.
Thank you for, uh, just your Herculean efforts to get us to where we are right now. I, so just in terms of process, this is a, uh, this is an action item. So we are voting on this and, uh, but it does not go to the state, correct? Or it does?
It does.
Oh, it does. Okay. Correct. Okay. Great. So I'll open it up for questions from commissioners. If I can just start. Oh yeah. Oh yeah, actually. Yeah. Do you all have questions that you want to ask before you need to be dismissed at nine?
Thank you so much for the presentation. My question is on just, you know, clarifying question on, uh, the comparison with the multi-year projections with reductions and without specifically for the unrestricted general fund. The projections with rejection, with reductions, that's just a reduction between the 2024, 2025, uh, third interim budget to the 2025, 2026. And then from after that, is it with, that doesn't include any other reductions in spending, that's just as if, is this stays same for those years?
Yes. Yeah, it's basically 2025, 26, you are, we're deducting out what's in the stabilization plan. And then everything else kind of grows and adjusts the same way that it did in the first version.
All right. Thank you for that.
Student delegate Liam? Can we go to slide 12 really quickly? I do have a question. So at the most basic level, right? Regarding a positive fiscal certification at some point, it's a metric that we put on for the superintendent. We're closely checking whether or not we're making progress towards that. The definition pretty straightforwardly is that we will meet our financial obligations. And so my question on slide 12 is, I mean, we're projecting a shortfall continuing through fiscal year 27, 28. This budget stabilization reserve will reach negative by 27, 28. And the rainy days reserve will be zero by 26, 27. Those two reserves are self-imposed reserves, right? And the 2% required by state law is the economic uncertainty reserve, right?
Correct.
At what point, I mean, so if you could just put in layman's terms, like where we see red? Red is not good. And if, if we are to meet our fiscal obligation, financial obligations for any given year, when will we reach that? Given the current projections?
Given the current projection right now, as the student delegate pointed out, when we're looking at 26, 27 and 27, 28, we are not anticipating any other cuts or reductions. So in order to get out of the red, we have to anticipate more reductions. And part of that will be thinking about our, how we strategically leverage our restricted funding to, to get to the funding. Where we want to be is we want to be balanced with our LCFF, what were our obligations for our LCFF base and supplemental and concentration grants? And be very clear what we're funding through our restricted supplemental grants. So that you could keep going each year and fund the same things on your LCFF base and supplemental and understand each year what services are supplemental with your restricted monies. We're not quite there yet, we're working towards that. But that really is, as Anne Marie said, we're going to get more funding most likely and it will be restricted and time limited. So we as a district have to really be clear, what are we paying for out of our LCFF-based supplemental and concentration grants? That's our biggest pot of money. And what services do we have to anticipate either continuing to find restricted monies for or services that end when the restricted monies? And when we can get to that level, you will, you won't see red anymore. Maybe you'll see red in different ways. But that I think is where we're trying to guide you to as far as we can as a roadmap, starting in June. And then as we said before, um, we really, budget planning is a multi-year thing and it's an ongoing thing. So we have to really be doing this all year round.
So, so if I can just respond or reflect back, just so I make sure. So our fiscal stabilization plan did not account for what I'm assuming are increases in, in expenditures that we're projecting over the course of the next three years. Is that accurate to say?
I don't know, I think the fiscal stabilization plan was designed to address, actually, if we go to slide eight, this might actually be a good way to describe it. The, yes, so, right, the, the red that is highlighted in the, like the net surplus shortfall is, is actually not the focus of can we meet our financial obligations, right? The question of whether we can meet our financial obligations is whether we have red in our ending fund balance. And so if you look at, I, for all of this year, we've had to submit our financial reports for the budget year plus two. So that's 24, 25, 25, 26, 26, 27. And in this multi-year projection, we know that we do not meet our financial obligations in 2026, 27, right? The red in the ending fund balance. And so basically, our finance, our fiscal stabilization plan is trying to correct for that.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to like hide the ball on the answer there. I just, I, I guess that was my, my wanting to get to clarity on that is that the ending fund balance is what's most critical here, not necessarily whether we are in a shortfall in any particular year. Correct?
Yes, but it is, yes. And the deficit spending is then sort of a, an indication of where we are headed.
Correct.
Right? And so that's then, if you were to, if we go back to the slide 12, you'll see that even though we are within a million dollars of meeting our financial obligations, we're 40 million dollars over, which would mean the next year, we're sort of back in the same position.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm.
And one other thing is I think that the fiscal stabilization time is a bit of a static thing. Really, budget planning is constantly making adjustments. Like as soon as you see a little bit of red, you start making your adjustments so it doesn't continue to, to grow. So in a, in effect, your whole budget process should be about stabilizing your budget, like shouldn't need stabilization plans. So I think the first one was very static. And now it is something that needs to continue. But really you build the muscle of doing this naturally every year and then you won't need fiscal stabilization plans.
Thank you.
So to stay on, um, slide 12, the thing, there's two things I think that are really concerning to me when I look at this. One is that I do the math in my head and I project out. It looks like although, although we don't need to do this many years out for certification requirements for CDE, it looks like even after making this year's 114 million expected cuts, you know, when we approve our budget in June, we will be on track to run out of money in 28, 29. And so we're still on a downward trajectory. It's just that we've slowed the rate basically at which we're going to run out of money. And I don't know, my kid's going to be in sixth grade then, so I'd like us to not, uh, go bankrupt. I'm sure there's a lot of folks who'd like to, to avoid that for many reasons. And so the other big concern that I have is that this doesn't, and for the reasons you stated, is not required to and can't. But it doesn't reflect any increases in pay for any of our staff, educators or not. And so to me, what this screams out, especially row E, is that we have to continue to make really like structural changes to the district, to whether that is our staffing model, our school portfolio, our, like whatever efficiencies we can find to slow our run rate. Because we actually should be having, in order to account for anticipated pay raises that we must have to continue to retain our staff and to not run out of money, our ending fund balance needs to actually get to the point where it's projected to increase every year. Not because we're hoarding money, um, just to have, instead of spending it on students, but because we need to have that money to account for increased costs of labor, which are the dramatically largest expenses that our district has as they, as they should be. So I guess to me, this, the takeaway here is that we need to potentially make more than the 30 million dollars of changes because 30 million will get us to that ending fund balance staying level over time. But really, it ultimately needs to go up to allow for raises. Is that, is that a correct understanding or?
Overall, yes. Yes. I think, um, the only maybe caveat that I would add is that the fund balance, once, it is, it is one time, right? And so, um, what, right now, having 40 million in the rainy day reserve, we have it. But once we spend it, we've spent it unless we replenish it. And so I think for, for thinking about salary increases, it can also be helpful there to it can also be helpful there to think about total expenditures or how much we're deficit spending or not. Because ultimately salary increases will be an ongoing expense every year. So your fund balance could hypothetically get you started. But it's not necessarily gonna sustain you when it comes to that like ongoing year over year commitment. But, right, I but I would your your description of it all, I think, was was accurate that. You know, if by continuing to sort of take stock of our overall picture and align our overall revenue with our overall spending, you can actually think about how to strategically build space in the budget for an ongoing increase.
And then can I just ask a follow up question about the assumptions around total revenues going up? I understand that there's some hopefully safety that we can count on like continued COLAs and things like that. An LCS LCFF model. But I just want to check, do these assumptions also take into account our projected enrollment over those years? And the projections in declining enrollment from demographers that we're receiving?
So the whoa, I got an echo. The the total revenue is and our unrestricted revenue is primarily LCFF. And then but then it is then, right, some federal, some other state and and local revenues. So in here we have built in, this is our our most updated LCFF calculator. It doesn't. It's it's relatively conservative in ADA growth. I know we're we're seeing increases in TK enrollment, which will lead to ADA growth. But this is actually a relatively balanced take on our LCFF product projections over the next few years. And the same is true for the other funding sources. So I think, right, well. I think that expecting some growth, I mean, the state budget can always take a swing that can have an impact. But I think overall, this is, you know, accounting for our patterns because we do look at three year averages for LCFF also. And so it isn't, we don't get, you know, drastic jumps if we have drastic jumps because you're just adding in a new year into your average. But that is all factored in for kind of all of the information that we have as of now.
Thank you.
I just want to start by thanking you so much for all the work. It's like I can only imagine what a tremendously huge and overwhelming job this must be to tackle. So I really appreciate it. I have a few questions. My first is just a procedural one. As commissioners, we were able to submit questions as of yesterday because of the information not coming out at the usual time. Will the commissioner's questions and the answers to those be made available to the public?
Yes.
Yes, I could go ahead and add them to the document. It's an active document, so we can go ahead and add them.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. And then, sorry. My other questions are substantive and I have very similar concerns as Commissioner Heeling raised as to how we end up being stabilized if we essentially continue to to be in the red for years to come. So and if we do so by all by essentially spending down all of our reserves to to even sustain what we're doing so far. So I'll just run through these and you could answer them in whatever order you want. I'm wondering what sort of what is the impact or the risk to us from the almost complete running down of our reserves? What are the, you know, what are some of the options we have for addressing this basic problem of, you know, of of continued spending more than we actually have? And I I in a sense, in the from a different perspective, we've seen large discrepancies or swings in the past from what the district projected it would spend and what it actually spent. So that in, you know, we've ended up better in in some ways than we expected to be. So I I'm wondering how that plays in as well and whether we think our projections of what we're gonna spend are better than they have been in the past, where we've often seen such a large difference. Thank you.
All right, we are going to tag team. So your first question about the implications of drawing down our reserves. We do end up with a it does put more strain and more risk on the district overall to have very low reserves, right? We are meeting our mandatory minimum, but as a large district with a lot of staff, having low reserves can present challenges with cash flow during the year when there's certain months where we're right, we're respond, we're we have transactions happening all the time, right? Everything isn't evenly spaced out over the course of each month of the year. And so that can put some strain on whether we have sort of all the money in the bank that we need. If we have a month of a low receipt of funding, but still expenses coming through, right? Processing payroll, all of that. It can also present sort of it it puts our overall forecast in a slightly less in a slightly weaker position. So when it comes to things like bond sales, other types of financing, it can affect our overall ratings because having reserves does reflect in, right? Approve an appropriate amount of reserves can reflect a strong financial position. Anything you want to add to that? Okay. I'm gonna actually skip the second one for a moment and the sort of the big swings that you mentioned, right? That is something that we've seen a lot of variability realistically, right? In between what we've budgeted and then where we come in with our on un-audited actuals and our actuals each year. It's challenging because some of that is we need to make sure that we are like with a budget and a district the size of ours, we have to be appropriately conservative to make sure that we don't accidentally overspend because if we do, then we're in a position that can be really challenging to recover from. But we also don't want to do that so much that it then means, right? That we're cutting more than we need to cut, that we're, you know, that we're right abandoning or ending programs or services that we actually could have maintained. And so I think that's something that we're continuing to try and be as careful and like as thoughtful as we can be to make sure that we're not swinging too far to that side out of out of uncertainty. I'm hopeful that the adjustments we made for third interim are going to be a better reflection of where we're gonna end at our year end projection and our un-audited actuals. But they're like they're they're going to be changes. I think that we have made some adjustments already earlier in the year, like bringing down our benefit rates where we realized we budgeted a little bit high, a few things like that. I think it it has been tough speaking honestly with having right, having turnover in business services where you can really take the time to think about what is the approach we're gonna use, analyze it, reflect on it and refine it. That having right, having some of the turnover in in staff that we've had has made it hard to have that continuity of our approach. Everyone comes in and just looks at it a little bit differently and so think, you know, so that I think that's that's a factor. But I think that I do also, I think maybe the last thing I'll say here is that I do think that Pam LaZan, one of our right, our fiscal fiscal advisor has been really, really helpful in she's been here since twenty twenty one. And so she's someone who's been able to really take a look. And when it came to preparing this report, looking at interim reports, does have a very balanced view in recognizing where we can bring down the budget because we really don't think that spending is gonna come through or make recommendations and help help me and I think help the staff who are here with sort of pressure testing what's appropriate so that we we can cover anything that might come through at the end of the year because we do tend to have more spending right at the end of the year. As people want to make sure they have spent what they can without having so much there that then we have this, you know, unexpected drop. So I know that's a lot, but I think it's it's just really trying to do that and be as observant, as deliberate as we can in knowing where where we're taking a conservative estimate to make sure that we've at least covered our bases.
Yeah, I don't have too much to add. And I think Anne Marie sort of answered the the question around the options. So I think as we refine the staffing model, that's another area to look at in terms of what are we looking at? What is the staffing model and how does that help us project our expenses? And if we have expenses due to long term vacancies, do we need to rethink some of our program services? So those are the areas that you sort of look at to be sort of conservative, but a little bit liberal. And that really is the balance. That is the the strategy of building. And I do agree with Anne Marie. I think this first this year with the transition to frontline is is a bit of a challenging year because we're in between two systems and we're trying to really track expenses in a lot of ways. I think when you finish your first full year of frontline and you're building budgets next year with that information, you're gonna probably be able to track your expenditures in a way that we haven't done before. And then, you know, you do another year. So if you on the second or third year of your front frontline, I do think that your budgeting and your costing out and projected will will continue to refine. And I think we'll have some suggestions on maybe some ways to work more closely at the school site level and how are we doing budgeting to really leverage the discretionary monies that school sites have with our overall budget budgeting projections, like those all really can come into play. So I think there's improvements that can happen in the future.
Can I ask a clarification? I thought when Anne Marie was sorry, Ms. Gordon was answering, she was answering my first and third questions and not the question about the options. But I think that you were referring back to her answer, so I'm sort of confused. Can you just lay?
I apologize, yeah.
Options, what some options are for addressing?
Yes, yeah. So some of the options, some of the options are also part of what she talked about, like being really refined in projecting your expenses, looking at your benefits rate, understanding like where you can have the plus minus. And then other options, more other different types of options are refining your staffing model, looking at programs and services, leveraging, really being clear as a district, like what are we funding through restricted funds? And when those go away, do we back? Do we have a plan to backfill it and make that plan as part of our unrestricted? Or is our plan that those services end? Like being very concrete about that because if you're not, then restricted monies goes away and you're kind of like, oh, do we do we keep the program? Do we not keep it? But making more of those decisions beforehand so that when that happens, it's already been it's an expectation and people are aware of that. So those are ways to sort of manage your budget as you're moving forward.
Thank you.
So I don't think we can echo enough of the gratitude because the again, just recognizing where we are starting from to where we are now and the clarity and refinement that continues to happen. And so I look forward to continuing, you know, to speak. I guess not to speak for my fellow board members, but you know, to kind of speak. We all look forward to continuing to partner on this. You know, if I if I start, so I I just want to first make sure I understand and as a follow up to a question that I had earlier in in the prior briefing. Does this reflect all our costs and all our revenues currently? If say I look at page thirteen, I know in an earlier slide there was a mention of, you know, some things are excluded. But does this include namely when I look at, say, the revenue, I'm calculating it's about one point two four billion? Does that include city funding, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, yeah, it is. It is our it is our total general fund. And so it does mean that what is missing is some of our special revenue funds. This would be, well, the county. It's also excluding, for example, we get specific funding for our early education programs. We get special funding for student nutrition services and then bond and capital projects. Because those are all very unique and specific special revenue. They are maintained in different funds, so they're not part of our general fund. So those are excluded from this, but all of our I would say the majority of other funding that right that we talk about is all contained here.
Okay. Just to get a sense, do you know approximately what percentage of the overall budget then we're looking at here compared to all in?
Ballpark all in, I would guess we're at like one point five or one point, maybe one point six billion.
Okay.
But the vast majority of what's missing is is bond and capital projects. The student nutrition services and early ed, I believe, are combined less than a hundred million.
Got it. Okay, that's really helpful. And then same question on the costs, you know, right here, it's about one point four four billion and we look at the general fund. Are there costs that similarly are are missing? And again, if we look at all in, what what percentage are we talking about?
Uh, it would be a similar similar rate. So really, it's the 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 expenses that are excluded are the expenses that we're budgeting against those special revenue sources, which are all self-contained. And so similar in proportion and break out across, but early education, student nutrition. We do have a small adult education fund and then capital projects.
Okay.
And and we can present a some we'll present a full summary of that also with the recommended budget. It's just because of the smaller nature of the third interim that we only focus on the general fund.
That that's helpful and it part of part of the intention of my questions is just to understand if what else is hanging out there, if there is any significant liability that is not funded, then it would be great to understand. So it sounds though that those those pieces that are are currently not captured in this are generally the the costs match the revenues. So there's nothing that that is is incredibly worrying when we look at this overall picture. Okay, so when I look at when I look at this, and again, given where we started from, it looks as if the intent and the the way in which this is designed is and please correct me if I'm wrong, is to use all the funding that we have and to save as many staff positions as we currently have as we go through this incredibly painful period. Is that generally accurate? As we try to use the funding and would you say that that is accurate?
Yeah, since all most of our funding is positioned, so we are looking to to preserve as many programs and services as possible and be more and be strategic in the abandonment of programs. And I think that was the idea of the supplemental early retirement program was also looking at a way for staff who may have decided that, you know, I'm going to retire now instead of in a year or two to also look at a way to reduce positions without eliminating positions. Does that make sense? And then preserving positions that we still need to preserve, but not having to have some salary savings in those. So I think it's a both and, I mean, we were, we definitely want to preserve as many positions because those are they provide the services, but we want to think thoughtfully about the services we continue.
I I appreciate that. And so I guess my my question, I don't know if you all can answer this now, but what is that financial model that then we need to move towards? Or is there a financial model that helps us to get at to connect our goals that we've stated that we're focused on in the in the V in the visions, values, goals and guardrails around third grade literacy, eighth grade math, college and career readiness? And how we then structure this? Because my my fear is if we're looking at it from, okay, well, we need to get to this budget and we continue continually need to cut, that that's not as strategic. And 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 I recognize, you know, in the current moment we're in, it feels like you all are doing the best job you possibly can, given the information or in a way the lack thereof, just given our our current human resources, our payroll system and whatnot. But I, you know, I don't have a a particular perspective as to how we do this. I I'm kind of looking to your leadership and I guess also to to your leadership superintendent Sue, as far as how do we get to a point where, you know, in in any organization that I've ran? Or when I look at organizations, it's sort of, you know, there is a separate financial model that looks actually, you know, that is an Excel spreadsheet with the the right variables or, you know, the right systems to be able to sort of say, okay, if we pull this lever, this is where we need to, you know, this is this is where this needs to go. And so I'm curious, how do we get from the current system, I guess, to something that then does help us? to something that then does help us to make decisions as board members as to what we then have to potentially make more painful cuts around? Or what we potentially even double down? I mean, you know, let's not just frame this in terms of cuts, but what might we say? Oh, well, here's where we need to invest more in, recognizing that that gets us to better outcomes and potentially even, you know, is, is cost neutral?
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you some of the thoughts that I think I have and Anne Marie can add in is as we've moved to a very student outcome focused governance and really naming the student outcome goals with your goals and guardrails, we have to move the budget in that direction. I, it hasn't been happening out of parallel, right? But to move the budget so you can make decisions about our student outcome goal of third grade literacy is our goal, and these are the budget decisions we have to make. The first goal, I think, is to really deeply design your budget so that you can map it to that. And I think that's where we're trying to get closer to, is mapping it to. We have the instructional coaches as part of the staffing model because that's the third grade literacy. We have social workers as, and community health outreach workers as part of the whole child and be more intentional about that. And having to have some really hard conversations about, as a leadership, like what are, we can't do everything on whole child. Is whole child going to be this support or that support? It probably can't be both. But I think where the budget, as you always say, the budget does define where your priorities are. And we have, it needs to be more accessible. So like you can look at and say, oh, I understand our staffing model is this. Our primary goal is third grade literacy, eighth grade math. And so we have a staffing model that does that. And then we might, I would probably, I'm just, you would do, maybe do this differently. But then we have our whole child, which is, that's our supplemental. How do we support with our supplemental funds? And really being clear with yourselves, like what is our LCFF based supplemental concentration for? Our student outcomes, then that's where it goes. And if a whole child is our supplemental, then what is our supplemental monies do? What are our restricted monies? So having both of those conversations, I don't, they didn't happen at the same time. So I think you're, it's a bit of, I think, I feel like the budget's a little behind the, the goals and guardrails, but that's where you want to be because then those discussions, when you're having discussions about student outcomes, you're also having a discussion about the budget at the same time.
That, that's really, oh, sorry, did you want to?
No, I just want to add that that's the reason why having a school staffing model was so important for us to start because we wanted to make sure that we knew exactly the different positions we wanted to allocate into schools to support the VVGs, to, to be able to be implemented. And that's why we were so fortunate to be able, they are the SERP, to be able to say that we were not going to lay off teachers because we knew that in order for us to really fulfill our visions, values, goals and guardrails, we needed to have teachers, teacher in every single classroom on day one of school.
Thank you.
This has been a very, I, I'm gonna build on what Commissioner Gupta just said because I, I appreciate, this has been a great conversation and yes, much love to our budget office. Thank you for the, the work you're doing. And it's kind of building on what we heard in public comment from one of our commenters too about some of the, and, and I think Vice President Huling, you mentioned it, the, some of the assumptions that we make going into this budget, you know, under enrollment when we have TK increases. And one of the investments we've made is a brand new literacy curriculum that actually teaches the foundational reading skills. Because one, it'll meet our third grade reading, help us meet our third grade reading goals. But also hopefully, and the, the data shows and the science shows, will reduce our referrals to tier two and tier three. And special education costs three times as much as general education. You know, the, the data we have from the Legislative Analyst Office. So I'm wondering where those potential reductions in, in services are reflected here in this budget, first of all? And also following up on the strategic investments, love to see where, where we've analyzed some of our top expenditures and what we can do to reduce them. Like for example, I'm hearing that we're opening more, more school psychologist positions and some of the, the related service providers from special education because we know they are so costly to hire externally. And it's better to, it's much easier to have actual employees doing the work than contractors. And for the other area of we, I think I've heard you say, Dr. Sue, that we lose 30 to 50 million dollars every year due to absenteeism. And so what investments are we making in that area? Like our CHOWs, potentially family liaisons, some of the folks that we're cutting now. Like these could be strategic investments to reduce those losses. So I'm wondering where is that logic to, to help close that gap in, in expenditure that we're just missing? I mean, closing that 50 million dollar gap by having some people actually focus on attendance? I mean, that could be a game changer from this multi-year projection. So I'm wondering like where are we, where is that strategic thinking in all of this?
Those are, those are excellent points, Commissioner Fisher. Once again, when we built the staffing model, we created knowing that we wanted to make sure that we had certain positions in our schools. And then from there, we went and built the budget around the staffing model. And then of course, from, from there, we made the very painful decisions to make reductions and cuts based on the staffing model. So we wanted to make sure that we prioritize what was core to meeting the visions, values, goals and guardrails. And, and so that's how, that's why we have a budget that is what we have now, where we have to make these painful reductions to meet the staffing model that we have created for ourselves. Having said that, regarding, regarding attendance, I, you're absolutely right. I've been saying that on average, we are losing upwards of 50 million dollars a year for students who don't show up to school on a daily basis. And but what's more important is that students are losing upwards of 4 million hours of instruction. What I have been doing is going and trying to fundraise private dollars, so additional restricted sources, so that we can implement a truancy prevention program here. I know from many, many years ago, SFUSD used to have a very robust truancy prevention program, attendance support programs. And over the years, we keep shrinking this program. But we have, I actually have a proposal out to several funders right now for that. I also know that the state is also looking into some attendance prevention, or attendance programs.
I just wanted to check in something as well. I hear, I see Mr. Duchan is here and is there anything? Is it okay to ask if he wants to add anything?
I was gonna ask, I was gonna invite him up after our questions were done.
Okay, great.
Which may seem to be right now.
Good evening, President Kim, Dr. Sue, commissioners, the ladies to my right. I, I want to start with the good. You've done some very powerful, good and painful things this year. Let's start with the less painful, which is, well, I don't know that it wasn't painful for Ms. Slough Smith and, and Ms. Gordon because they probably put in hundreds and hundreds of hours. But this is the best budget we've seen. And I don't mean good in terms of money, good in terms of quality of the numbers in it. Part of that is, is due to staff really looking at a staffing model. And, and I want to start with that in a minute. But I also want to give due credit to your HR department that was very proactive in working, and your business division, in working with offering a SERP that obviated many layoffs that you would have had to do in order to even balance your budget. In hiring, and then I know as painful as it is, but letting temp positions go, I want to assure you that using that staffing model as CDE fiscal advisors, we have approved wherever there is a demonstrated need. Meaning if you show that there's a school with 22 teachers and it needs 24 and there's not two available, we're okaying that you hire those. We're also not touching your local funds, being the student success fund and the PTO funds. Your HR department also looked at every possible source of reducing staff in the least painful way. That being said, I want to go back to a couple of questions. I, I think Commissioner Gupta brought up the number of positions and more than one of you talked about the model. There are two elements that are critical to your budgeting right now. One is the staffing model, and there are two parts to that staffing model. There's the part which is really not discretionary. That means, and it's, it's, it's pretty simple and bare bones, literally. It's the number of teachers required by either your collective bargaining agreement or state statute. And it's, I know you hate this, but the people who turn the lights on and off, you can't even open the school without them. That being said, you have lots of other resources that go into that staffing model. And there are, there's like two parts. So I, I don't, I couldn't pull it up and put it on the screen. But it's things like, that are not required by the state to do. They're part of your LCAP, they're part of your PEAF. Some of them that puts you in a dilemma along with every other school district in California was the use of one-time money to hire people. And you were told to do that. When you got ESER money from the federal government, COVID mitigation money, learning recovery money, you were told to address issues of learning loss during COVID. The way you and every school district in the state addressed that was by hiring people. Those of us, I hate to use the term, more conservative in nature, saw that as a real potential problem in that you hire people, you become committed to them, and there's no mechanism for the ongoing level of funding you had from ESER COVID mitigation, learning recovery. So then you had, as soon as you hired them, you basically have to turn around with a strategic plan to eliminate or replace the money with, in order to keep the services, find other money. So the model for chewing up your budget, using your words, you don't remember them, but I do, from the first board meeting I visited, Ms. Gordon talked about chewing up your budget, rightsizing your staffing, and it's not easy when you come from a position of having lots of resources. So that staffing model was a major step ahead for the district. The second thing, and it's still a work in progress, I think you've heard me say this before, is position control. And one of the issues, and this is why Ms. LaZana and myself, I'll take, I'll take all the bad here, are very conservative about saying you can hire people back is your position control is still not solid. When you say, and I don't mean, I'm not questioning anybody's honesty or integrity, it's just a matter of you don't have enough tracking of your staff to say for sure there are X number of people at, at a school or on the payroll. That will be rectified once you come into frontline. And you're then going to have to go through a process, which is very manual to say, hello, Mrs. Principal, we show that you have 22 teachers. Can you give us their names? Can you validate it? And it's, it's a painstaking process, but very critical. So I think what I'm trying to tell you is that conservatism has a place, albeit painful. In the end, you will probably bring back money, if not most of your staff, but you're also going to have to prune the tree. There are programs you have that you just don't get money for anymore. So that comes back to the question, I think more than one of you asked it, probably Commissioner Hugh, and maybe all of you asked it, how do you serve your VVG? And if you take, you, you will never have a true zero-based budgeting model, but you will start at your required staffing and then build on that. And that's where your third grade literacy, your student wellness and your college graduation and readiness all come into place. And as a board, as a commission, those are the painful decisions that even though they're good, if third grade literacy is the place where you want to put the pedal to the metal, then you're going to not be able to put the pedal to the metal on your, I've just picked fourth grade PE program, although you happen to be very fortunate because you have slam and PEAF, right? So you can do that. But part of it, and this is an observation from an outsider, you have a lot of money. It's just distributed in a lot of places. And cast this as opinion, based on many years of being around, that if you used it in a both more tactical, but even more strategic way, you would get a better performance out of whatever goals you want to achieve. And that concentration of how you put your resources in. Example, and I know Dr. Sue's familiar with this, you have lesson study. It's part of, I don't remember how many elementary schools are doing that, but lesson study is a database proven program that improves instruction, actually irrespective of the content, because it's based on teaching methodology. That is the type of program that's database, research verified, where you can say this is an efficacious way, I'm using big word, but to spend your money. And sometimes you're going to have to look at that if you want to get the concentration of benefit and not spread your money thinly. So my message, good, bad and indifferent, is that you have come a long way, but you have a long way to go. President Kim, I want to speak directly because I know in several conversations, you've been looking for that definitive answer of what makes us positive or what makes us not negative. And that's a, a little bit more complex than just your budget because as you may or may not recall, the district's gone through two fiscal health risk analyses. Out of those risk analyses, there were a number, a large number of very high-risk things in the district, including stability in some key positions, particularly your CBO position. And I say that knowing that your staff is doing everything possible to fill some of the most difficult positions there are in public education. So you can't just overnight say, okay, we got a CBO, we got a CFO, we've got this and we have that. But those things need to be brought into place for you to be what's considered a going concern and, and be able to meet your fiscal obligations. And I think, as you know, I'll repeat it anyway, there's kind of three criteria. You can meet your fiscal obligations, the state says you may be able to meet it, and the state says you can't. You still can't. So we are working every way we can. And again, I have to say, your staff, and it has been not easy for them because it's been a very different paradigm in terms of staffing, in terms of looking at where even people are in the district. Producing reports absent a sound fiscal system and ERP has been, would you call it labor intensive? Almost literally hand counting a roster of nearly 10,000 people. So there is still plenty of work to do. I want to commend you on the decisions you have been making as a commission. I know that all of you either continued on the board or ran for the board knowing full well what you were getting into. I want to thank you for that. You have so many resources here and I think that the deliberate use of them is really critical and you are moving in that direction. There is, I think, as you've been told, you need to find more money that's what, to do other things than you want, like deal with employee issues. I don't think you mentioned it, but I will, you usually build the COLA given what you're projected for the next two years. So the state and a school services project a COLA, they build that into the model. But just to let you know how difficult that is, if you get a 1% COLA, you're already in the hole because your ongoing expenses are at least 1 and 1/2 to 2%. in the hole, because your ongoing expenses are at least 1.5 to 2%. Happy to answer any questions. Again, I can't commend the staff enough. Unfortunately, I know one of them's retiring. And you, but I really want to thank them and the people who, I think I saw Ms. Bayer in the back of the room, the work her division has done with handling the layoffs, handling all the legal parts and the legal division. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duchan. And of course, as always, we appreciate your expertise and guidance. Just, just to be able to respond, I think the intention of asking around the specifics around the second positive, or rather, the positive fiscal certification is to get to clarity on exactly what we need to be doing to ensure we get to a place where our numbers are clear, we are meeting our obligations, and that we are able to get to a point where we say, thank you very much for your service and goodbye. And so, with all due respect. And so, I just want to be clear, because in some ways, while this is a very challenging, emotional and very real process as we undergo some structural changes in the district, there is also a very real numbers question that we have in front of us, making sure that we not just cross our Ts and dot our Is, but that we can look at our budget and have the confidence in knowing that we are in the right trajectory. And what I don't want to do is get into a world where we have confusion on where we need to go and what our exact and precise numbers are that we need to reach. And so, part of that, I feel like we've gotten some great clarity from the state in understanding what we need to do to make sure that we reach our numbers. The language of positive fiscal certification, I'm merely just taking from state letters that have been received by the board. If those are changing, I think that's, that is where I want to make sure that we have clarity as a board to hold the superintendent and staff accountable to exactly what are we working towards, right? And my understanding of what we're working towards is, again, just reading from the actions required from the state, to address our deficit spending for the district to meet its fiscal obligations in the current and subsequent two fiscal years, which is getting to a positive fiscal certification. So if that is different from what our ultimate goal is, I think that's the kind of clarity we need to make sure that we're rowing in the right direction here. But again, I'm just wanting to make sure that we're clear on exactly what we need to do as a board to make sure that we are reaching the goals that we have shared between CDE and ourselves.
Yeah, and I just wanted also to make it eminently clear that just balancing the budget may not get you there for sure, because there's factors like stability. Your fiscal health review analysis is germane to the decision the state will make in looking at your budget. So, and that's where it gets more complicated. AB 1200 has standards and review that they look at. And when the state looks at your budget, I'm not talking about Ms. Lozano and myself, but I just, I just want to make it clear that there's other work behind the budget. That's all.
And what I'm hearing is that there is a growing confidence in the numbers and in the direction that we're headed. If this is a conversation around the systems and structures on the day-to-day, we fully trust our superintendent and her staff to be moving in the right direction. I think the question is, what is the role of the board in making sure that we hold the superintendent accountable to all of that, which I think has been captured in all of our metrics for the superintendent this year. If there's something that is missing there, I would encourage you and others to please share that with us. But my hope here is that everything that the state has asked for, we are holding ourselves accountable to that somewhere, either in the superintendent's evaluation or in our own reflections as a board. But if there's something that's missing, I just don't want to make sure that, I want to make sure rather, that we are very clear on exactly what's needed in the work ahead.
Thank you. I really want to appreciate, President Kim, your pushing on this point, because I think it's really, really important for us as a board to be clear about, about what it's going to take, because that is the direction we gave to the superintendent. And it's not fair to her as an, as our employee, for us to not be clear as to our expectations. And we really need clarity from the state as to what that is. And if it's not just the numbers, it can't just be, it's complicated. Like there needs to be, we need something in writing, like in my view, it should be measurable metrics. And I thought it was, I, my understanding was that we were looking at measurable metrics. And if we're not, I would sort of request that we have some clarity on that, because it's, and the other piece of this, and Mr. Duchan, you have, are an amazing resource and have been incredible for working with us. But it's been almost four years now, right? And I think, I was concerned, I have to say, tonight, hearing from the community, this idea of an unelected bureaucrat making decisions for us, that's the first time we've heard that kind of thing. I mean, honestly, I think our partnership has been very constructive. And I haven't heard people calling you an unelected bureaucrat before. So that concerns me just from a public perception point of view also of like, you know, is, do you know what I'm saying? People should, we should have a partnership where it's very clear, like you're our partner in this, you're giving us clear expectations, you're holding us accountable, we're working together. And I don't want to get to a point where there's a sense in the community that folks don't understand that the goalposts are moving or it's not clear, right? You know, we're not holding the superintendent accountable. So I just, the more we can be clear, I think the better. So I don't know if you have thoughts on that.
Two things, may I respond?
Sorry. Just because it's really, I mean, you've talked about goalposts moving, and I think that's where some of the frustration is, is I, I hear this continued, you all, the district, not, not the board. District staff is doing incredible work, they're doing these things, we have HR, we have business, we have our budgeting department, like we have folks doing much more, in a much more thoughtful and intentional way. We're seeing, this is one of the best budgets you've ever seen. But it does seem, what is it, how long have I been on the board? Two and a half years? Two and a half years? It is, we're never there. And every time we think we're there, there's something else that I do feel like is not, not something that's tangible or anything that we understand. And if I don't understand, and I feel like the goalposts are moving, wrong or right, whether they are, I got to imagine that folks in the community also don't understand. And I don't think that is a position that we can be in, because it's like we're playing whack-a-mole and it's not a fun game at Chuck E. Cheese. It's like you're in a nightmare. So I would just ask you if you could, yeah, if you could respond to both of these about, how, why is this not moving goalposts at this point over the last two and a half years?
I'm going to be very straightforward and blunt. You have received multiple correspondence from the state, from your auditor, from FIGMAT. That's why I referred to the fiscal health review analysis. There were two of them, they were not good. You're making progress, but those goalposts have not moved one inch. You've moved closer to them, but they have not moved. I don't want to drag every little piece out, but you don't have a CBO. You do not have a person other than a chief fiscal officer. And I think that it would behoove the board to have, and we've asked for this, some study sessions with us regarding things like the fiscal health review analysis. And we only know that you get copies of correspondence from the state. I assume you all read them, the state gave you benchmarks. I assume you've seen those, they've been clear. My point earlier wasn't that a balanced budget isn't where you're headed. My point was there are more things. You need to have a stable business office. You need to have a stable fiscal system. You are getting there, but you're not there. So it would be imprudent and not honest of me to tell you that while you're making progress, you still do not have a long way to go. So if we use the goalposts, you're not near the red zone yet. You've got a ways to go, because there are all those other factors that need to be answered. Now, the state, it's up to, it's up to the staff at CDE whether they approve your budget. And there's whole other processes that go along with that. So I don't, you know, I hope we've been forthright. I think the letters from the state have been eminently clear in terms of what the district needs to do. Some of it are things beyond your control. I mean, you just, you can't help it that it's difficult to get a CBO. You're not alone. You can't help it that you have certain processes that were not put in place years ago. And you have a 15-year, well, now it's more like a 20-year-old enterprise resource program. I mean, not program, but people soft. It needs to be either updated, but you're doing that. But you're not by the goalposts. And I just want to make it clear, if I tell you that merely balancing your budget gets you there, and I'm still here a year from now, you're going to say you deceived us, Elliot. So that's why I want to be clear about that. There was a second part to it. I, let me make sure I'm going back.
No, I think that was the, I think that was it. But I think that the, the more that we can get that in writing to say, rather than saying there's more to it, I mean, I think, and I, those, you're, you're absolutely right. And you've been great about this, about giving us all those, the correspondence, all that. But to be super clear about what's the next, what are those goalposts, I think is something that I think would help. Because again, we don't want this dynamic where, like we all want to be rowing in the same direction. We want our community, we want our labor partners, we want everyone to understand what the goalposts are. And so it just concerned me tonight to start to hear that there's this kind of sense that perhaps we're not there. And so that's, we're just, I think it would benefit all of us to have more clarity from your end of like, what, what are those markers? What are the measurable? If it is the CBO, let's put that on the letter and, and say it, you know, say, once we do XYZ, we ought to be able to get together to say, here are the measurable outcomes, right? Just like we have measurable outcomes around students, we ought to be able to say, here are the measurable outcomes for SFUSD to get a positive certification, to measure our progress toward them. And again, that's, that's what we're, we're holding our superintendent accountable to. So we need to be super crystal clear about that.
And one thing that I would just add, Mr. Duchan, is, you know, given your experience and given your role as fiscal advisor, it's just incredibly helpful so that we can project out. So when you say, for example, here are the things, you're naming them, right? This is not complex. You just named three or four goalposts that we absolutely need to achieve. So if we have all of that, and then we can project out five or six months, again, you know, and I'd refer to some of the community comment that we heard tonight, you know, we heard our educators say that to, to have to wait until July to understand whether or not they're going to have a position, then that, that really affects our ability to be able to bring educators, to then be able to bring our families back into our classroom, which then affects our revenue goals and unfortunately detrimentally affects us as a school district. So it kind of comes full circle. And so I would hope we could work together so that, you know, we understand well in advance can meet those goalposts, so that we're able to let our educators know and assure our families that we're going to be able to provide great jobs and we're going to be able to provide a good education for our community members.
I highly recommend that we have an in-depth workshop with you, because some of those answers, virtually all of them, are in the letters that you've gotten from the state. I believe every one of them, except for the last one, when you had a newly hired CBO, was get a CBO. And so I'm not trying to be defensive, it's just, it's, it is complicated. Fiscal solvency is a lot of things. And yeah, I'm unelected, you can call me a bureaucrat, it really doesn't matter. You have unelected staff that are responsible for your budget. I, I could go into a long explanation of why you need to wait. And if you want, I can, but I don't think, I don't want to argue with comments you've gotten from the public, but there is a rhyme and reason for why positions shouldn't be approved till you have a budget. I mean, there's just, you know, it's just good budgeting.
So I really appreciate your invitation to the board to have a more in-depth conversation, because that, that is honestly the first invitation that I've gotten and I would really love to accept it. And I think that a lot of us would like to have further clarity and further collaboration with CDE to get to an understanding of what exactly is needed. I think that, you know, while some of my colleagues have been here working with you longer, I have not. And so since I've joined the board, what I've witnessed is the district and the board taking every single recommendation from CDE. And I understand that we are not at the finish line and we are not in any way arguing that we should be getting a positive fiscal certification as we sit here today. But we are looking forward to December and we're planning the work between now and our first interim for next fiscal year. And in that time, I think that we all fully expect that we will have a CBO who will be able to be recruited, you know, after this current school year ends, that we will have adopted a budget that accepts all of the budget cuts that have been demanded of us, that we will have our staffing model in place, that we will roll out our new fiscal system, that we will continue to work on our audit findings, that we have seniority list and we will have position control. And so what we don't want to do is get to a place where in December, there is something missing that appears, because it was not in writing from the state in advance articulated, to be more of a gut feeling from our fiscal advisor as to whether or not we should be in a positive fiscal certification. I think that the people of San Francisco, the employees of our district, the families in our schools, all deserve clarity about what decisions need to be made and executed between now and December, so that we can all achieve our shared goal, which I know that you share, of getting us to a positive fiscal certification, because we are all committed to that goal and we do not want to stray from the path simply because it was obscured. And so we would really appreciate that in writing. And I'm going to take the liberty of speaking on behalf of the board, even though I know it's our president's job, to accept, to accept that invitation and to make sure that we are setting up that meeting, because it is imperative that we are all in a place of shared understanding about exactly what the work ahead is. And we know that your job is to leave us in a stronger place than when you came. And I think that some of the concern that you've heard from both the board and the community today is that when we have a staffing model that was approved by CDE, when we know that we are all committed to executing the budget cuts, when we know that we will be rolling out frontline in the new fiscal year on July 1, we do not want to let beloved teachers who are in short supply, but who want to be in San Francisco, we do not want to let them go across the border or across the bridge to another district and then not be able to get them back and leave our district in a worse position, even if it's not a worse fiscal position, but a worse operating position in our ability to serve the needs of our students. So we would really welcome that and we really do want to make sure that everything we do is toward the sustainable strength of our district moving forward. Can I?
I am, no, excuse me. I'm not going to be in a position of being defensive. That invitation's been open to every board member for four years. There are details that a lot of people don't know about what, I want to, first of all, tell you, your goal should not be the certification, it should be solvency. And this, again, I'm going to say, there are details about what the state says in a positive certification. And I, now go back to your audit, please. There are audit exceptions that are critical in there. You lost $800,000 because of certain audit exceptions. So this, letters from the state have been very clear. And by the way, no, we do not make decisions. There's only one decision the state can make, and that's to rescind or stay action. We have worked cooperatively with your staff, we've listened to your staff, and absolutely do not think that I don't understand beloved teachers and I don't understand beloved staff, whether they're custodians, bus drivers or others. The real question here is how you really assure stable programs in the district for them. No decision that I have ever made regarding your budget is on a gut level. It's based on tried and true experience and the data that's in your budget. So, you know, I would not put your So, you know, I, I would not put your district's jeopardy on my gut, but put it on what's provable.
Let me have Dr. Sue respond really quickly and then we'll go. I know that Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Ray have last words and then we'll move on.
I, I just wanted to address the, the question of scheduling a meeting with our fiscal advisors, both Elliot Duchan and Pam Lozano. They have both asked us to schedule that. And I know that Judson has started that process. And unfortunately, it has taken a while. However, we are scheduling those briefings. Initially, we're scheduled maybe two months ago and then now we're trying to reschedule that.
And I know Mr. Duchan has been generous of his time with many of us who have approached with individual questions. Like, we've had some great conversations about special education and I, I appreciate your time there. I, I do, I want to circle back to President Kim's initial question. And again, love you, thank you. But we do want you, like, as much as I want my adult children to move out of my house, I want you to move out of our house too. And I say that loving my children very much, right? But it is San Francisco. So what, what's, in, in trying to figure out what our obligations are as far as getting you out of our house, and what I've found is the FICMAT Fiscal Oversight Guide. Because I'm a, you know, special education advocate, show me the policy, I'm a policy nerd, you know? I'm a, give me the guide. And there's a section about disproved budgets, qualifications, negative certification and other fiscal uncertainties. And that references ED Code 42127.6. So that's the only place that I can find what actually lays out what is your authority here. And that specifically calls out, and I'm not an attorney, so I don't want to veer into, you know, interpreting ED Code, so I'll just read it. Is that it, it's about current or two subsequent fiscal years if a school district has a qualified or negative certification, that's when you step in. So when we, it doesn't mention that the fiscal health and report at all. It, it's, it's specific to the budget. So I think when we talk about moving, so my question for clarity, maybe this is to you, maybe it's to the, the CDE itself, but like, that to me has been the goalpost since we started this process. Get to the negative certification because that's been the only documentation I can find from the state that guides us. So when you say that, that plus also the fiscal health, I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand where that's coming from.
Standards and criteria for under AB 1200. I think also in that section, you'll find a whole section on lack of going concern, which to its own, even the language in that book is poorly defined by state law. But it basically is saying, can you continue to go in good fiscal health? And some of those are judgment calls, not mine. Again, we're not talking about gut. But when the state looks at your budget, they look at a whole picture. So it's holistic. And, and I know you're all looking for, does the temperature need to be 98.6 or can it be 98.5 or 98.7? There's just more to it. And that's why I'm making a point of this tonight is I don't want there to be ambiguity and for you to come back because what you just read was that basically you're probably, unless the state makes an extraordinary finding, going to get a positive certification in December because your past two have been negative. And there's no certification on your budget, no certification now. So hopefully you will move to a qualified. And again, under a qualified certification, the state could have appointed an advisor. That was a discussion that, that the state had with me when I was brought on. And we all agreed that that was not the appropriate time or place to do that. It was not until the district reached a negative certification that we thought it was very critical for there to at least be in place a mechanism for stay and rescind authority, which, as I've said before, and I'll say again, it's not our intent to ever use that. We, you know, that's a tool we want to keep in the toolbox. And to this date, your staff, you as a board, have been very considerate. And I don't mean in a kindness, kindness way, but considerate in terms of not deferring that decision to anybody else. I would not want you to make that, to have, to have to have a decision stayed or rescinded. I, as a superintendent, would never have wanted that in my district. And I, I don't think you wanted any more than I do. So that's why we've avoided it. So I think that, you know, there, there's a lot of details in the weeds here, but the bottom line is, as you say, Commissioner Fisher, we're all working toward the same goal, which is a constant, consistent fiscal solvency and a set of systems that are in place to make what is ill-defined as a going concern. So you want to be a going concern. Think of it as a small business. You want to have revenue and expenditures that match and are projected out for years. And you want to look at the ownership of the business. Is it stable? Is it being sold? You know, there's just a lot of things. So what I'm, my point here is that there's not one switch that's going to be flipped and says, okay, you're positive today. Because I, I know you as a board because you'll come back with the same questions in December and say, why didn't we get positive? We have, our budget's great, it's better than ever. We have every staff position filled and no extra and we have a surplus at the end of the year. So I, I just have to be forthright with you that it's not, it isn't that simple. It's not gut, but it's a, it's a picture the state takes of your budget.
So wait, if we do all of that, you're saying we wouldn't get a positive certification? Is that what you're telling us?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying it's just not, you could do all of that and have all of you leave the board. I'm not saying you would. But if you all left the board simultaneously, you probably wouldn't have a positive certification under almost any circumstance. There's just factors that come into a balanced system in the district. And, and I don't deal in hypotheticals. I don't approve your budget. And I'm not trying to defer the responsibility to somebody else. I try to be forthright with you in terms of what it takes to get there. And I, I hope that's clear. I don't want to belabor that nor defer it. But I also don't want you to think that getting rid of one red line is going to put you in a fiscal, fiscally healthy position.
Sorry to interrupt, we need to vote to extend the meeting.
Yeah, oh, yes. I will bring it to Commissioner Ray in just a moment after we vote on extending our meeting, please. Be on our.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting past 10.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta.
Yes.
Vice President Healy.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiesmann Ward.
Yes.
President Kim.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I had the audacity to tell Commissioner Wiesmann Ward that we would be done by 10:15 and here we are. Sorry, I apologize publicly and on the record. Commissioner Ray.
Thank you, President Kim. Okay, I also, I want to thank you for, you know, for being here tonight and for helping us along through these many years of being a fiscal expert and fiscal advisor and for working with staff. We want to have as positive and collaborative a relationship as possible. And, you know, we are very grateful to you and to Pam Lozano for the assistance that you've offered. I have a couple of questions and they stem in part from public comment and from emails that we've received. I expect that many of my fellow commissioners have received similar emails. And I have a more general question. So my specific question, I think it, you know, it would be helpful to hear from you about why it is, if it is in fact the case, that the district cannot currently hire, you know, bring back temporary teachers, folks who the district wants to bring back and for whom a funding source has been identified from site discretionary funds or whatever else. Why are people being told or understanding that they're not able to do that? And for other staff positions as well to the, you know, where people do have discretionary money from their PTA, for instance, when will folks be able to hire for that, if you can tell us? You mentioned that you don't have any control over how those, those funds are, are spent. But a lot of folks essentially understand the state to be holding the district back from doing that. So if you could offer some, sure. Saying a lot of folks perceive the state as, as holding the district back from being able to hire temporary teachers or other types of staff, even when there are discretionary funds available to do so. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to, you know, explain what your perspective of the state's position is on that. And then my more general question is whether you have any, you slash the state, have any areas of disagreement or concern about the third interim report that's being presented tonight and about the fiscal stabilization plan? If you could identify those concerns or areas of disagreement, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I feel like you queued me up for exactly what I wanted to answer. So I think that it's important to realize that communications are very difficult. Your superintendent issued a press release that I think answered some of those questions to the public, which are sites are free from us. And again, I'm not foisting this on the district to spend the student success funds however they wish. We might tell the district, we think that's a horrible idea, but we're not going to do anything about it other than advise. Same thing with PTO monies. We have already approved 162 temporary hires. So the answer is, as, and I think I said this earlier, as the district, along with us, we've been working hand in hand, looking at the same rosters, identifies that there's an open teaching position at a school for a classroom position, the district can hire a temporary teacher. In terms of the other funding, there's a whole bunch of other fundings. Your budget's not adopted yet, the state budget's not adopted yet. We want to take a last look at your projected enrollment for the fall. And I think from, I don't think, I know this, from the very beginning of when you made the decision to issue layoff notices, we said as state advisors that it would be at least June till positions were approved. Actually, we've backed off on our word regarding temporary positions, student success funds and PTA, PTO funds. And there was a second.
There was, but she'll not get that too.
Your third, no, we have absolutely no qualms with the third interim report. Your staff did an excellent job. The only qualifier is you are in the process of converting to a new budget system. And there are going to be, that's not going to be painless either because it's going to correct some things that were problems in the old system. It's going to refine your budget. Maybe you'll find you have more money, maybe you'll find that there are less. I want to go back to a question of why there was money left over even last year. And that was because there was a Herculean effort to close out vacant positions. So all these things happen on an ongoing basis. There has not been, I'm not going to say there's no disagreements on anything, but there have been very few disagreements between Pam Lozano, myself and the staff. Probably Pam and I did have more disagreements, but, you know, that your staff is, they want to do the work and the work is difficult. And not to slight anybody here, but your, your business office is understaffed right now, you had, and it's been for a long time. And it's been tough for the district to fill those positions. And you're not alone. Probably every day I get a call from somebody looking for a CBO and even more difficultly, a CFO. So no, this, the, the reports, I think as good as it can possibly be right now. I think they've made the point that it's ongoing, that your fiscal stabilization plan is this year, you're going to need one for next year, so.
Okay, can I, to clarify something? You mentioned approving 162 temporary positions for hire.
Yeah.
I, I understand unless I'm misunderstanding, as possible misunderstanding something, but that there are other temporary teachers that we would like to hire back? Is there any, what is the reason why we're not able to do that yet?
We're getting into the details here, yeah. There are a number of sped positions on there. We have agreed from the beginning to hire every sped position that's budgeted. Some of them are not budgeted, some of them are not clarified. And when I say not budgeted, again, you're transitioning from one system to another. So, you know, there's, there's a number of teachers on there. We've met with sped staff today, we're trying to expedite that. When I say budgeted, means that you can't hire somebody unless you have money in the bank to do that. So.
In a sense, I guess, what does that mean unless we have money in the bank to do that? And how long until, I guess, we're considered to have money in the bank?
Well, you, what it takes is what's called a position control number. That position control number, this is really getting into detail, but in your new system requires what's called an HRA, a human resources action, I think is the A, I'm not sure. I don't think anybody knows what the A is for, but it's a new process. So some of it's learning that new process. We want to be assured that when, if a, I think a good example would be, because it's, you talked about it earlier, hiring a psychologist in lieu of a psychologist on contract. So when that happens, there may be money that needs to be transferred in the new budget from consultants to a position. That position wasn't budgeted, so you need to have a position control number. It's a detail, it's not a major one. And some of the hiring on sped is just going to take time because I, I will tell you, worked in a district that was much smaller. We never could fill all of our language, speech and language people. They're just hard positions to fill. So give grace to HR on that.
Can you give us, I guess, is there a way to answer this question in a, you know, in a way that it's easier for people to understand? Are we, are we going to be able to hire people when? I guess to the extent you can do that. Like, we, we essentially have to go position by position and have that position approved or there's sort of a general timeframe people can look at as to when they can, when they can hire people?
They can hire, well, those are two questions, right? One is, can they hire people without our review of it? And the other is, can they hire people with our review of it? So right now, well, when they have a position control number, when it's in the budget, which means it's entered into the budget by a budget analyst that assures the money's there. It's, it's a technical issue.
But this, but it's a technical issue that's impacting. I mean, we heard the president of the Administrators Union tell us tonight that we're going to have vacant classrooms on the first day of school. That's a concern to me. So when I hear it's a technical issue, my response as a board member is, well, let's figure it out. Like, that's, what are the resources we need? Do you need to be here more days a week to approve all these things so we can get these people hired? These are urgent issues for kids, right? We don't want to do anything fiscally irresponsible. I think this board has shown, we do not want to ever hire anybody for a position that's not budgeted. But it's, this is, it's frustrating to hear that, oh, it's very detailed and it's technical, but we're talking about classrooms that need to be staffed for kids this fall.
Not only that, I'm hearing from.
What do we need to do to get the approvals from, so that we can hire our folks? That's, I think, the question.
Can, can I repeat myself?
Well, we haven't heard a response.
You have heard a response.
No, because Commissioner Ray asked times, when are people going to be able to be hired? And you said it's a technical process. And I'm, and I apologize, I'm getting frustrated because I'm, I feel like you're actually evading the question. The question is, when are we going to be able to hire our staff? That are, that are budgeted, not staff that's not budgeted, but, but staff that's actually budgeted.
162 positions have been approved. Every position that you demonstrate, you being the district, where there's an opening at a school for a classroom teacher will be filled. Every position that you demonstrate that's needed, budgeted and planned and sped will be filled. The technical part is it's got to be entered in your budget. You cannot hire a person, commit to paying for them without it being in your budget. That's beyond me, that's not legal.
Nobody's arguing for that to happen.
But that's, those are two different questions. I really want to explain that so that there's no lack of clarity here.
Okay. We, last year, we are so lucky we haven't been sued to the end of the earth and back because of the special education, the debacle that happened in special education last year. So when we sit here and say, as a CAC member, we've had district leadership come to our CAC and say, we've got these positions, we've got the codes, we've got everything. They have bent over backwards to provide this information. So to sit here and say that that hasn't been provided, I'm offended on their behalf. We cannot put ourselves in the, not only from a compliance standpoint, but in service of our kids. We can't let what happened last year happen again. Not on my watch.
Can, can we just, I think it would be better, you know, if we could
Yeah.
discuss this more, like, just style down the temperature, I don't, nobody should be.
You know, I don't mind people being angry. No, I really don't. And you have a right to be angry. That debacle last year had absolutely nothing to do with us. We have not disproved any sped position up until the last week when we looked at it, and they were, they were not budgeted. Simple.
You responded really quickly last year when I, when we talked about that. You responded immediately and approved those positions. That's what, but that's what, I think what we're trying to do is get clarity because we heard from the community the confusion. That's why we're trying to get clarity moving forward. And it sounds like, again, like it's, it's, like it's a process, it's technical, it's long. When are our classrooms, when are our principals going to be able to hire people? We've got paras, we've got this, you know, the, we heard about the LGBTQ liaison. We heard, there's all these positions that apparently have been budgeted, but are still being blocked by this process. I think what we're trying to understand is what do we communicate to the community as to when, when we've budgeted a position, when will it get approved so that then it can get hired? Is that the right, am I asking the right question?
I think so. Maybe it would help if we could have a, you know, just an example and run through something.
Sure.
So people.
I'll run through three or four.
Okay.
Classroom teacher, as soon as an opening is identified at the school. And I'm not saying a principal thinks they're going to need two more teachers. I'm saying that Alamo schools budgeted for 20 teachers, I don't remember what it is. And there's only 18 there, done. Unless there's 24 at another school that only adds 22. That's why 162 have been proved. It's an ongoing process. We look at the new hire list almost on a daily basis. They've been approved as soon as the needs justified.
Just, just to be clear, the assumption here then is that the remaining positions that have not been approved are not budgeted?
You know.
Can I say something?
Hi Pam, yes.
Hi. Okay, so just want to say that, first of all, the positions that we're reviewing on the new hire list, when they were first put on there, there was a lot of information that was not provided to us. We didn't have the position control number. We didn't have the funding. We just had that they needed to hire this position at this site. And in some cases, it would say that it was a replacement. In some cases, it said it was blank, or it would be a new position. So when we started going through and asking questions, because our whole concern for you is that there was a lack of position control. So when we have a list of 400, 500 positions that we need to approve, but we can't even tell what the position is for or how it's being funded, we have to go back and get that information from your staff. There was a lot of confusion and still is to some degree on how this is working out between the new system and the old. And so it, it became very clear that we needed to pull together, and they did do that in HR. They went together and put together a list of the positions that they knew that they needed to fill. At the time when we did that, I had already gone through and done a reconciliation and came up that I felt that you needed 162 positions in the teachers in the classroom. And so that's why we had already said we would approve those. Now, in the meantime, they're working through clarifying that list. And if they come up that they have another 100 positions that we can see that people have turned in resignations or whatever it might be, then we would go ahead and approve those too. We're just asking for them to give us that information because we don't have that. So until we get that, we can't say, oh, yes, go ahead and hire 200 teachers when we don't really know if you need it or not. And then this goes back to your earlier conversation when you were talking about being positive. You've got to remember that when we were first brought in, we were brought in as fiscal experts because you were not shown as being an, I'm trying to think the wording. Basically being, having an ongoing business. You know, there was concern about that. So there were many pieces that fed into that. So as an expert, we were in there just kind of help and assist and do what we can do to assist with the budget and all of that. When you then went negative is when we were up to the fiscal advisor. So when you go back and all of a sudden you're going to end up, say, you, you are qualified or you're positive, doesn't mean that you'll be totally out of the observation of CDE because, because you don't have your own county office that oversees your district. The CDE takes that responsibility. So more than likely, they would still leave in fiscal experts even though they would not have the status that we do now where we have the stand, we send power. So just keep that in mind. It, it may not be like you go, that you have positive and then we'll be gone because there are other issues that we're dealing with in addition to your budget.
Okay.
Can we think another?
I'm just going to pause this right now because clearly there is some need for some greater clarity in exactly where we are with our hiring practices and what is allowed and what's not allowed, what's budgeted for, what's not budgeted for. I appreciate the conversation to get to clarity on exactly what's needed. I think the reality here, and I'll just say this on behalf of the board, we want you to have all the information and confidence that you need to make sure that we have our positions approved so that we can move forward with hiring. I think clearly there is some questions to be had around whether or not we have that information and what has been communicated or not. That's fine. I, I think, I just want to underscore, I think this is maybe one example of the need for us as a board to be really clear with what exactly is necessary for us to know so that we can hold Dr. Sue and staff accountable. And frankly, I think there is an honest question here of, if, if this is on us around needing to clarify our own systems and our own structures such that you get the information that you need, that sounds like important information, then we should ask those questions too. And if that information is there and has been communicated, then I think there are some due questions for our advisors around where we are in that process or where, rather, you are in that process of making those approvals. At the end of the day, what we know is true is that there are positions in schools and people need the support in their classrooms. And so I think that that message has been received loud and clear from the public to the board in the many emails and the testimonies that we've received both today and in the past. I think the, the urgency around this is that we will lose people. I mean, we are already losing people. And so I, I can very much appreciate the need for clarity around the numbers that we are providing. And I would hope that the superintendent and her team are working diligently to provide that clarity and the specificity around those numbers. And it's May 13th, school's out in less than a month. Less than a month?
Three weeks.
And, and I do think that there is a reality of concern that we will begin next year at even more of a loss if we are not able to move quickly. And so, so I appreciate CDE's efforts to want to move fast with us. I think there is some questions that we need to get answered. And we warmly accept the invitation to have a briefing both with you and others. And I know that some of that work is underway already. But I want to thank you for being here today in person to have this conversation and certainly won't be the last. And I appreciate my colleagues here for asking questions to get to clarity. I think, again, we just don't want, we want to make sure that we have the utmost clarity in understanding what our role is as a board, what the role is of staff in getting what they need to get done, and where the kind of responsibility kind of picks up from CDE and making sure that we are all rowing in the same direction. And so, so with that, I, I, again, thank you. Thank you Pam as well, who I know is listening in. And we will look forward to that briefing once it's scheduled.
I would, intel, intel is not the right word. Please call Pam or myself anytime between now and when that briefing is. There clearly are a lot of questions you have. We communicate most generally through staff, and that was actually your direction to me, that you, to work through the superintendent. She has done an excellent job. She's put out, and, and, well, you cannot control the information that all people have and bring to your podium. Because the answer today is the positions, as far as we know, are being filled in classroom positions.
But I just, I want to be clear, I don't, I will say this just very bluntly. I don't view that as rhetoric from schools. I think there is a reality of our schools where everyone is very concerned around where we are with our staffing, with our budget. I, I do think, I mean, unless anyone on the board disagrees vehemently on that, I, I think we have, I mean, we all carry our own relationships with our, within our schools and communities as well. I don't view that as rhetoric or language from schools. I think there is a very genuine fear of what our schools will look like if we do not move fast enough to preserve our staff.
Totally agree.
And so, so I don't want to.
Tell you that you do not want us communicating with the public. I don't do that, won't do that. I'm happy to work with your communications people.
Okay, so, thank you. I will.
And I don't consider it rhetoric, President Kim. I understand that when they come to you, they come with a real concern. I think there are ways to allay those concerns.
Sure.
President Kim.
Yes.
Can I ask one question? I think there might be a misunderstanding going on to some extent here.
No, I, I really do want to stop our conversation and just move us on. And so, there was one thing that I wanted to say, but I can't remember what it was. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Duchan.
Thank you.
Thank you staff for being here and, and, thank you all. Oh, we do need a vote on this. Oh, I'm so sorry. This, this was about your request to meet. So commissioners, I just want to be fully transparent with the conversations that we've had around the desire to meet with, with commissioners. So, and I've shared this, what's that? Yeah, 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 I just am acknowledging the request to meet. So, so what I have shared with Mr. Duchan, with Dr. Sue and staff is that we would like for, I mean, given all the different touch points with commissioners, we want there to be some sort of structure and staff there, knowing that staff are the ones who are doing the work and carrying the load here and actually making the changes in partnership with CDE. So the, so I'm, you know, the request came in, I said, yes, we would.
Some mouse.
Okay. We can always trust. Yeah.
Okay, please. Yeah, yeah, give me a call tomorrow.
Just to be clear. Yeah. That was not a reaction to you, Mr. Duchan. I just want to be clear. It will. We have a furry friend.
But there's only so many places for it.
Yes. She'll come back, don't worry.
Gave a new friend, Matt.
We just want to make sure that staff are present so that they are able to take notes and follow up with the kind of day-to-day work that takes place between the CDE, our fiscal advisors, and our staff. And so that has been part of the coordinating, I know that Judson and the board office have been doing to make sure that staff are present when conversations take place. What we don't want are one-off conversations where we're not capturing the next steps that are necessary and clarity needed to get to where we need to go. And so, so I just want to be transparent about that. And we'll take you up on your training, or I know that there's been conversations already about that. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, but I do have to make a clarification.
Sure.
As commissioners and trustees in the district, you have, we work for the state on behalf of the district. That includes both you and the superintendent and the staff. It's your choice if you choose as commissioners not to have those one-time conversations. I think they can be very valuable. I think that Commissioner Fisher and myself had a very long, I don't know that she agreed with anything or everything I said, but at least a long conversation about sped, sped budgeting and some of the technical stuff that goes beyond a workshop.
Yeah, I, I don't think, yeah, I don't think this is anything about clarifying questions. This is more about the substantive work that's needed to move our budget forward. And frankly, that work is just not held by the board.
And we would recommend small, like two or three people.
Yeah. So again, I, I just am trying to acknowledge that we don't actually have a hand in, in managing the budget itself. That is the work of the superintendent and her team.
Agreed.
So, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Duchan. And with that, I will go to a roll call vote. Please, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. On the third interim, Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta.
Yes.
Vice President Hewling.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward.
Yes.
President Kim.
Yes.
Seven eyes passes.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Mr. Duchan. Thank you, Pam. Thank you, colleagues and our mouse. Moving forward to item three, we do have items ahead of us, commissioners, but hopefully this will be fast and quick. Oh, no. Item three, 255-13SP3 Legislative Overview: Consideration and Action of District Positions on Selected Legislative Proposals. Can I have a motion a second, please?
Some of.
Second.
Can I, I would like to call on the superintendent, or does it need to be this until the record?
Great. I'm just going to hand this over to Ms. Hongmei Ping, our head of communications and operations, or government, sorry.
Good evening, Superintendent, President Kim, VP Hewling, and commissioners. We'll make this brief. I am joined today by Abe Hagela and Nick Romley from Capital Advisors to present our recommendations on selected legislative proposals. They are joining us virtually tonight because they are closely monitoring the upcoming governor's may revise up in Sacramento. Every year, the San Francisco Board of Education considers and adopts positions on state and federal legislative proposals to advance policies that align with our vision, value, goals, and guardrails. We have provided you with the list of K-12 bills of interest for your consideration ranging a wide variety of topics. We are pleased to share the final selection of bills and recommendations for action tonight, considering the district's policy and priorities. And I want to take this opportunity to thank the Special Education Community Advisory Council for their advocacy and also consultation as they are a key partner in developing this list that is before you. We are requesting that the board take action to ratify the proposed recommended positions on select bills that are before you. And just wanted to quickly note that the bills that you are considering tonight do, does not, the, the list does not include budget bills. We are monitoring the state budget process and waiting for the governor's may revise so that we have a more accurate picture of the budget landscape for your informed decision-making. Additionally, please be advised that as the legislative process progresses, it is common practice for the superintendent to take legislative positions in between board meetings until the positions can be formally ratified by the board. And in a moment, Mr. Hagela and Mr. Romley will briefly introduce the partnership between SFUSD and Capital Advisors and provide an overview of the bills and recommended positions. We would be happy to discuss and take questions and appreciate you for your engagement. And I will turn it over to Mr. Hagela and Mr. Romley.
Thanks very much, May. So we'll be really quick on this. I did want to say a couple of words about the budget. And then Nick is going to talk a little bit about where we are in the legislative process. And then we'll quickly get to the bills. And on the bills, we mostly want to just find out if you have direct questions. We could go through the entire list, but I, I believe that would take far too much time.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need to go through the entire list.
Understood. So the one thing I would say that's relevant to the conversation you just had, May revision is going to come out tomorrow. And from everything we are hearing, it's going to look fairly close to what was proposed in January. And the reason why I say that is that you can expect a 2.3% COLA that will be funded for all the programs that get COLA. And you can expect some one-time money, over a billion dollars of one-time money, most likely, and that all the programs that are, you know, currently being funded and expanded will be expanded. So that's the good news. The bad news is next year and the years after, it looks like we're likely to have more challenging budgets. budgets. Nick, do you want to just really briefly tell them where we are in the legislative process, and then we'll go to the bills?
Yeah, thanks, Abe. So just quickly, Commissioners, so we are at a stage now where the bills have passed through their first, what we call First House Policy Committees. So think Assembly Bills in the Assembly and Senate Bills in the Senate, they have all been vetted by their relevant policy committees. They're now pending in fiscal committees largely, so those think the appropriations committees in both houses. And, you know, that deadline to get out of those committees is similarly looming, I believe it's next, next Friday. We should know that that Memorial Day weekend, all those bills that are pending in the fiscal committees will be considered, and we'll have another update into what bills made it, what bills did not make it. And then remember Civics 101, right? The bills will swap houses, so Senate Bills to the Assembly and Assembly Bills to the Senate, and they'll start the policy process all over again. So all that to say, the positions that we're recommending and that we hopefully ratify this evening will give us plenty of time to engage on the district's behalf with the legislature and then subsequently down the road with the Governor's Office. So just a little, it's a little table setting for you guys.
So with that, let's turn to the bills and we'll turn it back over to you to tell us how you want to proceed, just ask us questions or go ahead with the vote, however you want to proceed.
Yeah, I'll open it up for questions from the Board to see if there are any questions. Yes, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you for this very comprehensive list, and thank you for taking into account the CAC's recommendations. And I appreciate Ms. Ping, the shout-out for the CAC and the ledge day that they just did and all the advocacy work they do. So as bills progress and as things happen, what are the mechanisms to keep us engaged and updated on the process and the potential need, like, you know, some of us have been to Sacramento to lobby with other organizations like the CAC or CSBA. Where are opportunities like that to engage in this process here?
Yeah, it's a great question. We'll keep working with Hongmei to figure out what that process will be. What we know is that things will change rapidly. And so our goal is to either create a process where we create information in writing, send it to Hongmei or the Superintendent, it gets distributed to you and you can respond to it, or we set up another opportunity to talk with you directly. But we'll have to work with Hongmei on that. Things are moving so fast on the budget that we thought we'd see where things settle with that and then see what the next step is.
Thank you.
Are there any questions that may influence the outcome of your vote?
Regrettably, I have one.
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 My question is with respect to SB 98. Did we get further clarity as to whether or not that bill applies to LEAs and whether the there is an immediacy requirement in it?
Yes, my, my apologies. So we did, it does apply to K through 12 as well, and I apologize for not updating this list on that. And it is not currently requiring the immediacy. So that issue that you highlighted before appears to be addressed, but we're going to watch the bill carefully and make sure as we go through.
Does it stay on our recommend support list with the application to LEAs?
Yeah, I think we're still recommending support because we think it's consistent with your policies because we don't think it has that immediacy requirement that creates the operational problem. But like I said, I'll confirm that with staff and and work with Hongmei to move that to another position if we need to.
Thanks, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the addition of AB 1025 Pellerin to the watch list. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and move us to roll call vote, please, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Hewling?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Kim?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Moving to item H4, 255-13SP4 Authorization and Direction to Staff to Finalize Certificate and Employee Layoffs. I turn it over to the Superintendent.
Thank you, President Kim. I'm going to invite up our Associate Superintendent Amy Bear to provide you with the information.
Good evening, Superintendent and Commissioners. I want to point out for the Board and for the public that we added a presentation, it's just a few slides. I'm talking about layoffs tonight, and so we wanted to provide a little bit more clarity for the Board and the public. So that's coming around, and there's copies for the public in the hall. So just to sort of orient all of us to where we are, due to budget constraints, the Board took action in February to reduce 395 certificated positions and 134 paraeducator positions. This included, the certificated number included teachers, counselors, and then there, again, 134 paraeducators. Through attrition and through the SERP, the Special Retirement Incentive Program, that number was significantly reduced. So we were only required to give preliminary notices to 34 counselors and 126 paraeducators. So we did not have to give any teacher layoff notices. Next slide, please. So since then, the district and UESF have reached a layoff settlement agreement. 130, excuse me, 103 of the paraeducators and 31 of the counselors signed that agreement. And the Board took action two meetings ago at the April 8th meeting to lay off those groups of employees. Since then, the district has held hearings for the three counselors and the 23 paraeducators who did not sign the agreement. Tonight's action is to adopt the decision of the Administrative Law Judge and authorize the final layoff notices for three counselors and 23 paraeducators. Next slide, please. So what are our next steps? As you heard a little bit early in the previous presentation, we are actively working with our CDE advisors to verify funding for all of these positions. As soon as positions are approved, we will be rescinding those layoffs, and we will do any rescinding in seniority order. So I'm happy to answer any questions before I go on to the items.
Are there a question that may change the outcome of your decision?
Yes.
Okay. One?
Yes. My, my question, given the previous conversation, is of these 34 counselor positions and 126 parapositions, how many of them are now currently funded? Because I remember that when we approved these in February, part of the concern, well, the real concern was we didn't have the money for these positions. So how many of them do we now have budgeted?
So according to the records that I've shared with the fiscal advisors, we believe that we have positions and position numbers and budget numbers for all of the counseling positions and all but eight of the paraeducator positions.
So 118 of the pairs?
Yes.
And so when was that information provided to the fiscal advisors?
I don't, I don't know the exact date. I I know we reviewed it last week.
So but as of last week, they had this information?
Yes.
And have they indicated when they will approve hiring for these positions?
So they actually have gone through and approved some of the positions, some of the positions that are funded out of specific budgets. So we've shared that information with the unions and, you know, we, as soon as those positions are approved, we have to bring back people in seniority order. So we've been hoping to get more clarity about whether or not we could approve the bulk of the positions and bring people back as a whole group.
So has the CDE fiscal advisors given you any indication of when they might complete the review of the 118 parapositions and 34 counselor positions for which we have budgeted?
My understanding is that the positions that are funded out of the LCFF funds have, won't be approved until June.
So we're being asked to sort of reaffirm layoffs for positions that we have budgeted, but then now we're going to have to wait until June. Why are we waiting until June to approve the budgets for these, to your understanding?
To my understanding, I think that we needed to get through the third interim report, which I understand we've done tonight. That's the guidance I've been given.
So it's essentially the CDE advisors are saying that we need to wait until June, but haven't given a reason?
Yeah, in my looking at the data, we have positions that were either included in the staffing allocation or meet the supplemental hiring guidance that we've given to sites. They have a budget number that's identified and a position number.
So, yeah, I guess, thank you, Ms. Bear, I really appreciate, I really appreciate your work on this. I just want to sort of reiterate this concern because this, to me, illustrates the previous point we were just discussing. And, I mean, I'm honestly very concerned about voting for layoffs because I feel like we, I mean, this Board has shown we're willing to make tough fiscal decisions like voting for layoffs, which we all did in February. But then it's, you know, if we're now being asked to vote for layoffs for positions that are already budgeted, it it just starts to feel like we're violating the trust of the community. And so I feel like if we, you know, and if the fact is we're just going to be able to rescind these quickly, that's great, and then we could vote and proceed. But we don't have that level of clarity from our fiscal advisors at the CDE, and I feel like it's creating this, I mean, I think that's what I was trying to say earlier. I feel like with, it's creating a lack of trust with the community, which we started to hear tonight. And so that's, I guess, I don't know what the specific plans are, but I'm willing to support these with the understanding that we're going to really prioritize this meeting with CDE and being able to then tell the public soon that, I mean, some of these positions, like the LGBTQ support person, right? I mean, that's a critical position, which now, my understanding is it's funded. So we have funded it, we as a district have said, and CDE is saying you can't hire that person yet, essentially. So ours, that to me is is not acceptable. And so we just got to get some resolution on that as quickly as possible.
Can I ask a clarifying question? What happens if we vote no on this? If we know that we have the funding for the positions and we will eventually, are there any unintended consequences to voting against this resolution, these resolutions, these next two?
Since the Board has taken action on the bulk of the layoffs for the employees who signed the layoff settlement agreements, my concern would be that the three counselors, for example, that didn't sign the agreement and went through a hearing with the Administration, Office of Administrative Hearings, and those, those three are not the least senior people or the most senior people, they're mixed in without, throughout the list. So I think, you know, because we reached an agreement with the union, the bulk of their employees signed the layoff agreement, I would ask that the Board approve these layoffs and that our focus becomes rescinding them as quickly as possible.
Was the timeline of when they would be rescinded and rehired shared with them at the point that folks signed? Did they have all the information?
We didn't have information about whether they would be rescinded. They they signed the agreement that they would be laid off.
Ms. Bear, is it fair to say that if we didn't approve these layoffs today, we would be creating a perverse incentive in the future for folks to not go with the guidance of their union and rather to create more cost and expense for the district by going to hearings?
That is my opinion, yes.
I think we're ready for a roll call vote, please, Mr. Steele. Thank you.
Thank you. On 255-13SP4, Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Hewling?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
Thank you, President Kim?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Moving to item H5, 255-13SP5 Adoption of Proposed Decision of the Administrative Law Judge Regarding Layoff of Classified Employees and Authorization and Direction to Staff to Issue Final Layoff Notices. I turn it over to the Superintendent.
So this is a, another layoff item. The previous one was for the three counselors. This item, H5, is for the 23 paraeducators that did not sign the agreement but rather went through the hearing process. So we're seeking direction from the Board to authorize staff to issue a final layoff notice to 23 paraeducators.
Any questions that may change the outcome of your decision? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please, Mr. Steele.
Can we have a motion on this item?
Oh, so sorry.
Thank you.
So moved. I move.
Yeah.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Hewling?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward? President Kim?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Sorry, just, I just realized I can motion my own items. I don't know why. Anyway, item H6, 255-13SP6 Appointments of CSBA, oh, sorry, thank you, Ms. Bear.
Thank you very much.
Very much appreciate your leadership. Item H6, 255-13SP6 Appointments of CSBA Delegates. I am asking the Board to approve the appointment of Vice President Hewling and Commissioner Gupta as CSBA delegates of Region 58, officially meaning, meaning that we officially have three representatives on our CSBA delegate body. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any?
Welcome to the club.
Any comments or objections?
Thank you for the quick vote before Commissioner Gupta could rescind his text.
Yeah, okay, roll call vote, please, Mr. Steele. Roll call vote, please, no comment.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Heck, yeah.
Yeah, Vice President Hewling?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
And President Kim?
Yes.
All right, seven eyes. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Vice President Hewling for consent as I step out.
At the advice of counsel and given Commissioner, or President Kim's new position in the city and the number of MOUs that the city has with the district, and to avoid any appearance of a conflict or actual conflict, President Kim will be recusing on a standing basis from the consent calendar due to the number of MOUs that appear there. And so in his absence, I will move for the approval of the consent calendar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Steele?
Are there, we need to ask the Superintendent if anything is removed.
Is there anything removed?
Thank you. Yes, roll call vote, thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Hewling?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward? President Kim? Oh, sorry, sorry, yeah. Six.
We'll retrieve him.
Thank you. Moving to item J, Information Items, Quarter Report and Williams Complaints are available on our agenda. Item K, Board Member Reports, are there any appointments, commissions, or comments from Commissioners on advisory committees or member organizations? Nope. Moving to item L, Agreement, I adjourn this meeting at 11:05 PM.